Just to order. Welcome, everyone, to your Fort Worth City Council work session. David, I think today is a good example of why we need a new City Hall and more space for all of these wonderful people.
More on that later, but we do need a new City Hall.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. First, we'll talk about upcoming events, and I'll remind everybody that the council retreat is on Friday, February 10th, 8:30 Convention Center this Friday, 8:30 Convention Center. You should look a little more excited. Yeah, okay. Next, I'm going to call on Robert Medford with Emergency Management to talk about the winter event from last week. Robert?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor and Council, City Manager's Office, and my management for the great support that we received last week. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I want to go through the scenario. We all know it was cold and nasty. Wind chills were probably our biggest enemy last week. We worked with eight internal partners and seven external partners to manage this event. Our overflow shelters averaged 131 people a night, with 85 being the low and 167 being the high. The EOC received approximately 104 requests for sanding, and of that 104 requests, plus the requests that we didn't receive in the EOC, TPW Streets distributed 2,050 tons of sand on city streets. Trinity Metro stopped bus service early Wednesday morning and then reestablished bus service on February the 2nd, Thursday, February the 2nd, at 10:00 a.m. During the interim time, we used some Trinity Metro buses and fire department equipment to move people from our various locations for homeless sheltering. We had 138 power outages during that period of time. So power outages weren't a big deal. We had no significant water pressure losses, no significant water main breaks. So with that, I'll open it for questions if you'd like.
Questions? No? Just thank y'all very much. You did a fantastic job, and y'all communicated. I told Renee this on behalf of the PAO office, but I felt more prepared than I'd seen in a lot of years in the city of Fort Worth in terms of what was being communicated to council members. So thank y'all for doing that and working so hard to all of our essential services that worked day and night during the last few days. We are very appreciative.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to do this next up here. I want to make an introduction, but as I do that, I want to also recognize somebody. So if you remember, at the beginning of last summer, our former Planning and Data Analytics Director left for another job in another state. And so we're in the middle of the budget process at that time, as you might remember. And so we said, well, who can we tap in the organization to lead us through the budget process, which, at that time, you're late in the game, you're working with existing staff and departments? So we tapped Richard Zavala, as you might remember. And so Richard left the Parks and Recreation Department at that time to come lead Planning and Data Analytics. So part of this is, I just want to recognize Richard Zavala stepping into that new role and bringing us to where we are today. So let's give Richard a hand. So one of the things that you do when you have a vacancy open at that level is we, SGR, was the one that we're meeting with to talk about the candidates that we want to think about, to hire, to come to Fort Worth and to lead the Planning and Data Analytics Department. So Mark, I've known for a number of years. He used to be the City Manager of Tyler, Texas. He used to be the City Manager of Kerrville, Texas. And if you get him talking enough, he'll tell you about his stint as an Assistant City Manager in Dallas, right? So during this conversation, that we're talking to Mark about what kind of candidate we wanted to bring to the city of Fort Worth, I'm thinking, well, Mark's the guy, right? Mark's the guy that should be doing the job here in the city of Fort Worth. And so I started telling people that my objective then was to figure out how to talk Mark into taking the job to lead Planning and Data Analytics in the city of Fort Worth. Now, he hasn't completely signed on, so his title is Interim Director of Planning and Data Analytics, but I'm just telling you what the end game is, all right? So everybody in the room can help me with the end game, but I do want to introduce today the Interim Director of Planning and Data Analytics, Mark McDaniel. Mark, come on up here.
That was a crazy buildup. Well, I retired after 35 years in the business, and I thought I would never come back and do something like this. But I have a real love for both the fiscal aspect of local government and comprehensive planning, and this was just too good of a match. And looking at what we might do to take the whole operation to a new level is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And so I'm just grateful for the opportunity, David, and thanks for convincing me and enabling me to convince my wife that I can go back to work, so.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mark.
Next, I'm going to call on Jessica McKetchern and Robert Sterns to recognize a couple of our employees.
And I'm going to go ahead and get Manya Shore and Martha Collins to come up here as well. It is my privilege to join Robert Sterns today in recognizing these two ladies. Last year, or actually recently, they were named to the Emerging Local Government Leaders' Top 100 Influencers in Government for 2022, and we are incredibly proud of them. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the nomination for Manya, and then Robert will tell you about the nomination for Martha as well. So Manya was nominated by an employee of the county, actually. And in the nomination form, they wrote that Manya is a magnificent force in local government. She is pure lightning. She's a visionary who sees libraries not only for books, but for community, creativity, and as places to grow and thrive. Her ability to get things done is unmatched. Manya makes certain that innovation will live and breathe throughout her department rather than sit on a shelf. And I think that is so true. I know in my eight months here, I've recognized Manya as a true leader, just very, very creative, very willing to think outside of the box and leave, just lead these great ideas to see them through. And so we're very appreciative of her work.
Thank you, Jessica. You know, as department heads, we often talk about the importance of getting the right people in the right seats and matching passions with skill sets and what we're trying to do as a city. Martha is kind of the epitome of that. Martha joined the Economic Development Department in October of 2019, didn't have a lot of economic development experience, but if you looked at her background, and as I sat through her interview, I could just see the passion that she had for revitalization. And when ELGL sent out their request for nominations, I was more than happy to submit that nomination for Martha on behalf of Economic Development. And I won't read the whole thing that we sent in, but I will just read a couple of comments. So Martha is the Project Manager for the $70 million Evans &amp; Rosedale project. And so for those of y'all that know our long history, our 20-year history of working on Evans &amp; Rosedale, Martha, along with Amy Conley and Neighborhood Services, have been leading that development over the years, and we are this close to groundbreaking. And Martha's been the one that's been basically herding the cats and making sure that all that moves forward. She has also brought the Main Street America Program to Fort Worth, and this was really Martha's idea. She brought the Main Street Program to us. She's coordinated with our community leaders. I see Annette Soto Maderos back there in the corner, Stacy Marshall with Southeast Fort Worth. So she has been working with our community partners to move the Main Street Program forward in coordination with Main Street America. Those two pilot programs and two neighborhoods for revitalization efforts, I think, are going to make some significant changes in the North Side and Southeast Fort Worth. So again, Martha is our real MVP in revitalization, and we wouldn't know what to do without her. So thank you, Martha, for everything you've done for us.
Next, I'm going to call on Reggie Zino, who's going to introduce our new Purchasing Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're really excited today to announce Joanne Gunn as the next Assistant Director, Chief Procurement Officer for the city of Fort Worth.
But yeah, just still sulking.
I know, I know. Still upset at me. Joanne has been working in the city attorney's office since 2016, has worked with various departments in providing business and legal transactional analysis for several departments, as indicated, police, Neighborhood Services, and in particular, the Procurement Division within the Finance Department. Joanne has a unique skill set. She has excellent communication skills, which will be very beneficial as we refocus and relook at the procurement process. We think she will bring a very collaborative effort in working with various departments in ensuring that we move forward in the right way with the procurement process. So I'll turn it over to Joanne at this point.
Well, thank you, Reggie. And I just have to say, I love working for the city of Fort Worth. This is home to me now, even though I'm a transplant from Waco. I've always liked frogs better than bears. And so the fact that I'm able to continue working in the city and have the opportunity to grow and take on what, I am so excited for this opportunity, and I can't wait. So to have this opportunity, I can't thank Reggie enough. Everyone in Finance has already been so supportive, Tony and John, and really made me feel welcome. And the support and growth that I've experienced in what is just an incredible city attorney's office here, I will always be thankful for that. So I'm looking forward to my next chapter serving the city, and I'm ready to get started.
Awesome. Congratulations, Joe.
Now I'll recognize Chris Harder, and he will recognize a couple of employees. Chris?
All right. Good afternoon. There's a fine line between recognition and embarrassment. So I told both Jan and Mary that I'd try to walk that line, because I've worked with both of them for a long time. I just think the world of them, and I don't want to get up here and gush too much. So we'll start with Jan. Many of you know that our longtime Deputy Director, Kara Sharar, has announced her retirement, so we've been anxiously trying to get that filled and went through the interview process, and pretty much unanimous that Jan was the best selection for our utility, which made really a lot of people happy within our utility, because Jan is just so universally admired, not only for professionalism, but also just for her teamwork. And as I was listening to some of the other recognitions, I was thinking about Planning and Data Analytics, where Jan has helped out there over the last couple of years, a couple of times. And just with our winter storm, Monday afternoon, our team met how we were going to help support the EOC effort, and out of that meeting, Jan had volunteered to work the night shift for the whole week. And that's just the way that Jan is. She just gets in there, rolls up her sleeves, and gets the job done. The next recognition I wanted to make was for Mary G., and Mary Gugliello, for those that you don't know her. We call her Mary G. So Mary G. has been elected a Vice President in the American Water Works Association. This is a 51,000-member organization that is not only represents the United States, but also the world in terms of water issues. So there is a lot going on in the water industry right now. It's a perfect time for her to take this really, really influential position within the water industry. Tremendous opportunity for her personally, professionally, but also as the utility, as the city. It's just wonderful for us to have her in that high-level position. With that, Jan, would you like to say something?
I really look forward to this opportunity. I know I've got very big shoes to fill, even though we know Kara has very small feet, but big shoes to fill, and I'm really looking forward to all the opportunities ahead of us. And I want to thank Chris for his confidence in me to become the next Deputy Director. So I look forward to working with each one of you.
I just want to thank the department, Chris, and the previous directors who have supported my involvement in AWWA for my almost 27 years here with the city, and thank the council as well for their support. I do think it helps Fort Worth to have someone at this level in the international association. So thank you all.
And now I'll call on Christina Brooks to announce our February 16th Black History Program. Christina?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Assistant City Managers. Christina Brooks, your Chief Equity Officer, and I am here to talk a little bit about Black History Month. The story of Black History Month begins in 1915, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States, when the Harvard-trained historian Carter G. Woodson and the prominent minister Jesse Moreland founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting the achievements of Black Americans and other peoples of African descent. And to celebrate, the Diversity Inclusion Employee Committee is hosting a program, Fort Worth's Historic African-American Neighborhoods, on Thursday, February 16th, which will be broadcast live on Fort Worth TV and the city's YouTube channel and Fort Worth City Hall. The program will feature a presentation by Daya Barry Mitchell, a cultural historian passionate about preserving Black cultural history and tradition. There will also be a performance by the Employee Choir, and if you haven't heard them, if you haven't been to any of those events, you definitely need to show up, because they show out. And the Tarrant County College Northwest Campus Mosaic Dance Project, and the Southeast Campus Fusion Dance Company. Again, the program will also be available to view on demand on both platforms beginning February 17th.
Thank you, Christina.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Christina, before you leave, this is a very special service that we offer, Movies That Matter. And Christina, before you came, and Fernando is here, and I think you know what I'm going to talk about, I hosted a screening of a documentary on the life of Malcolm X. And at this time, we were dealing with the aftermath of the Jacqueline Craig situation. And the reaction to that movie being shown, or that documentary being shown at the Botanical Gardens got quite a bit of criticism. But I didn't yield. We showed the documentary because it showed the life of one person who was very, very critical to race relations in this city. And so I want to thank you for bringing still Movies That Matter, but I also want to ask you to be bold, because it is those bold ideas that get people thinking about things that make them uncomfortable. And so I wanted to mention that because Movies That Matter, everybody needs to see every movie that we show. And so thank you for doing this. And I know I'm emotional about that, because the Race and Culture Task Force almost blew up because of me wanting to show that. So just know, we've had some difficult times here, but I hope people will be open-minded and look to see what you don't know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Next are our informal reports. The first informal report is on the 2021 Tarrant County Bond Program and our inter-local agreements with Tarrant County. And Lauren Prier is available if there are any questions. All right. Next is the city's role and responsibility for providing oversight to appraisal districts, and Richard Zavala is available if there are any questions.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Richard. I know this was kind of complicated to put together, but I think it's really helpful, both for our residents and for us communicating, because we often get consternation about what's going on at the Tarrant Appraisal District, and this is really helpful to help us navigate that. So thank you.
David, I'd like for Richard to come up and, you know, for the purposes of our viewing audience, to kind of give an overview of what work he did.
Good afternoon, Richard Zavala, Planning and Data Analytics. Yes, the question was, what control do cities have over appraisal districts? Under the Texas tax code, it's very limited. In a sense, when it was set up over 40 years ago, the actual appraisal districts, the people that appraise your property, can't be the same people that lay your taxes out. And so it's a separation of those two things. You do have control as a council, because you can appoint people to that through votes and collection of votes, and I think the city attorney could address that better. But annually, you vote on who's going on, not only the Tarrant Appraisal District, but Denton and the other appraisal districts in the area. So again, it's a separation.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. The next informal report is on the November 2022 Sales Tax Update, and once again, Richard's available if there are any questions. Moving on. The next informal report is Fort Worth Human Relations Commission's Movies That Matter, and Christina Brooks is available if there are any questions.
Christina, I don't have, well, I do have a question. I'd really be interested in hearing how, if you could provide a summary of how the movies were selected this year as opposed to previous years, and then I'd like to talk about the movies that we've selected.
Logan, Council and Mayor. So this year was a little bit different. We had a little time crunch. Usually, these movies are selected, the documentaries are selected, about a year in advance, and we have a subcommittee on the Human Relations Commission that actually reviews a slate of films. They watch them, they make selections, and based on a set of criteria. And so this year, because there was some time differential, and we lost some commissioners to rolling off the commission, we wanted to make sure that we got this slate selected. And so this year, it was selected in-house and reviewed and vetted and put forward, and we shared that list with the commission in preparation for this year's selection. So they've already started, we've had discussions with the commission about moving forward earlier this year with the process for selecting the slate for 2024, using those guidelines. But as usual, we're always open to suggestions and recommendations from council on how we can improve the program. We have a couple of ideas on how we can do that. We'd love to see council there at Movies That Matter, and we have several ways for you to participate. And we'd also would like to suggest, like, formalizing recommendations from community members for potential documentaries. Of course, they would have to meet the recommendation and the guidelines that we've established over the 10 years-plus of the program, but that's an overview.
What are the, generally speaking, what are the guidelines for selecting these movies? I don't know that I see them in the IR.
So there are a couple of, there are three major things that are important. So it has to be time-bound, right? It has to be over an hour, but not more than two. It must be a documentary film, and it has to have some aspect of human, civil, or cultural awareness aspects to it. We vet the actual documentaries for fact-checking and updating any data that's discussed in the film, making sure that we have current information available for the participants or the attendees at the showing. And all of those, all of our films are actually followed by panel discussion with subject matter experts. We like to use local subject matter experts on the panel discussions following the film.
Great. Thank you so much. I've had the opportunity to attend a couple of them, and they've been really informative. I am less than, first of all, thank staff for the time and effort that they put forth in doing this. I understand that things were different this year because we didn't have those commissioners in place. But as I read this list, when I think of Movies That Matter and the movies that I have attended and the discussions that I have been part of, they have all been thought-provoking around issues of race, ethnicity, classism, sexuality, you know, religion, things that make us different as a community. And those panel discussions provided afterwards have always been incredibly civil and incredibly informative. And when I look at this list of movies this year, quite frankly, it feels like we're just throwing a softball, one after another. We've got one on being nice, we've got one on food waste, we have one on the San Antonio Crisis Intervention Team, childhood trauma, a mission joy, which are all great and they feel good, and I bet we could all learn something from them. But I'm afraid that we are not utilizing this opportunity to set an example for our community on what discourse, civil discourse, looks like around difficult topics. And if we can't do that as a city, if we can't do that here at this table, and if we can't facilitate that, and the way that we have historically done that is through Movies That Matter and our HRC, then we are failing our residents. And so I really, you could not have teed up better, Councilwoman Bivens, your thoughts and concerns, because we didn't talk about it before, but I'm glad you said what you said, because as I read this list, I was disappointed to see the depth of the topics that we have presented to our community this year.
I will bird dog onto you, and I don't want to start just being real upset about this, but we have fewer and fewer opportunities to educate our public on the importance of diversity. And when we see movements around the nation blocking as many efforts as possible, like a bowling ball taken to pins per topic, it makes this one place that people have known for years they could turn to and become enlightened. And so, and that's why I use the term "be bold." You know, I would rather people be upset because the movie selection is so different. But I can promise you, we don't need to help people stay in the dark. And when you allow the movies that we see now, when you allow that to be Movies That Matter, I don't think anything on there matters for me, at least what I've expected from the history of that. So I encourage you, please, let us help you. Let us help. We can help. And I promise you, we have an audience not only in Fort Worth, but in Dallas and San Diego. We have a lot of producers who are just looking for venues, and these are not movies that are intended to insult. There's a difference in There's a difference in insulting than educating and enlightening. And I just don't want all of the cover on education to be pulled in the dark, especially this, this place. Please let us help.
Well, I'm always open to receiving feedback and support from council. As you know, you all support and appoint HRC commissioners. So that's, that's a, that's a given.
I want to help you directly. I don't, I don't care about who we appoint. I just know that we need to do better. We need to be more impactful. We need to make other cities say, look what Fort Worth is doing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I, and I do want to mention that, you know, over the 10-plus years that we've been doing Movies That Matter, 6,000 people have been in attendance and we viewed more than 360 films. And within those 360 films, we have covered provocative topics, but provocation with purpose, right? And we're a solutions-driven program. So this isn't kind of an opportunity just to discuss the problems without solutions being discussed, which is why it's always followed by an expert panel. And so I'm very proud. Yeah, I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that we have been able to do that in years past and we expect to do the same going forward, bringing people to information that they may not have been aware of and doing so in a way that speaks to the nature of Fort Worth.
Talking about this year's movies. And we want this year's movies to reflect that rich history you're talking about. You should let us help.
Thank you, Gina. I'm going to reserve my judgment because I've not seen any of these movies or have I even watched the trailers. So I think before I give commentary, I'm going to do that. And I appreciate your presentation today. There are some topics here I don't think we've covered before, and I think that's an incredibly encouraging thing. So maybe each council member, if you have concerns or have additional films that you would like them to consider in the future, please get those to Christina and we'll come back to this conversation.
One question.
Go ahead.
Can we get the list of the films that we have shown in the last 10 years? That would be a help.
Actually have them with me so I can make sure that you get a copy of that list of all the films that have been shown since 2010.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next informal report is Outdoor Events Permitting Process. And Michael Crum is available if there's any questions. He's coming up.
I have questions. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate this. You probably know this, but those out in the audience don't know, the impetus for this, me requesting this IR was an application that some business owners had put in on, in the West Seventh area. And it would have allowed, it, it would have allowed the open consumption of alcohol weeks after we had started enforcing an open container ban in that area, causing a lot of confusion for business owners and patrons alike. And so I appreciate you putting this together. What my ask is, I think for me, there are two times when it would be helpful if our council office was notified prior to that outdoor events being issued. Not that to say that we want to muddle in the process, but in, you know, in the instance that I just gave you, I did want to muddle in the process because it was important. And so I think, I, I know that if it's three days, streets are closed for three days, you let us know, and that's great. But I think anytime a street is going to be closed in our district, a courtesy notification would be helpful, just in case we get an email, phone call from a constituent asking what's going on. We're not flat-footed on, on being able to write an answer. And then also if it's going to change or change in any way or expand the use of, or the consumption of alcoholic beverages, I think that would also be something that I would like to know is, is happening before, before that permit is issued.
Sure. We hear you loud and clear. And our outdoor events team actually is here today. Cynthia Alexander-Ramos, Cynthia waving from the back row and her assistant Katrina Holly. And so that will be an easy one to add, add to our process. And so going forward, as we have permit applications, we'll notify the affected council district office.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is the overview on the performance of active economic development incentive agreements. And Robert Sterns is available if there are any questions. And then the next informal report is an update on economic development incentive policies. And once again, Robert's available if there are any questions. Okay. The last informal report is the, on residential solid waste collection and the rerouting update. And Brandon Bennett is available if there are any questions. All right. Last couple guys got off the hook. All right. Mayor, that completes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, David. We'll move on, council, to any questions regarding significant zoning cases that are coming up on February 14th next week. Carlos?
No questions. I just wanted to kind of provide council with an update on where we are. I continue two of those cases, ZZ 22-165. I had a virtual meeting with a developer, their representatives, their legal counsel, member of the Eagle Mountain Second I S D. I encouraged them to take a different approach to this, maybe through PD with site plan, to try under the, you know, high, I'm sorry, high-density zoning to reduce the number of units in order to try to address the concerns that the school district has with capacity. So that's ongoing, the working on that. Then second, on ZZ 22-204, the developer is scheduled to meet with the Neighborhood Association, which they have not met with yet, that the property is located within, and that's going to occur this Thursday. So we'll see how that discussion goes.
For clarity on 165, are you continuing that case on the PD discussion or do you plan on hearing that case?
I may. It's really tight timing. I'm getting some real-time information, you know, from the developer right now. We may not have enough time. And if that turns out to be the case, then I'll continue it again for a sufficient amount of time.
Thank you, Carlos. Any other questions or concerns from council members on zoning cases?
Yes, I have, but I'm trying to look at these little bitty letters on here. It's ZZ 22-198, and this is a development off of Dottie Lynn. It's gotten quite a bit of input, as you know. So what, what are you hearing now?
Lots of opposition. Nothing new. Nothing has changed since the zoning commission.
Okay. Just be prepared. And I think we're also going to have, I don't know the number, but the case involving the concrete recycling that's coming up on, on this agenda as well, right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
What are you hearing there?
We're getting mixed. We're getting some people in support, some people in opposition. The applicant may want to continue the case, but other than that, I think there, there hasn't been very much new information provided.
I intend to uphold the recommendation from the zoning commission. And one thing I'm asking staff to do, and I forget who I asked to do this, but when we have people signing in, there should be software that automatically calculates the geographic reference from the site to where these people signing up live. Because I'm getting a lot of feedback from folk who live maybe in Dallas, in Allen. And I don't mind looking at my own little map quest and see where you live, but I know there's software that will make that easy for us. And it helps this council determine who they're talking to and who they're hearing from.
I'll get with the director on that to see if there's, if something that we can find for you.
Okay.
Definitely.
And we might also make sure that, well, I'll, I'll talk about that offline. After the zoning commission, people thought that they were harassed and there was name-calling. And it was very unpleasant for some older people who had spoken. So we can make sure that people feel safe when they come here.
Thank you. No other questions on zoning cases, council? If not, do you have any significant questions on MNC log that's in your packet? No? Okay. David, I think we can move on. The first presentation we have is an activity update by Trinity Metro. Rich Andreski, our CEO, is with us. Hi, Rich.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm, I'm driving. Thank you. Okay. So it's good to see you all. It's been a little while since we've been together here in, in the chambers. I've started, I think you'll recall, last summer. And it's been about seven months on the job and I'm really grateful for the time here to give you an update on what we're doing at Trinity Metro. Just before I get started, I wanted to just recognize a few individuals in the room. We have three Trinity Metro board members here with us. Board Chairman Jeff Davis is in the audience. And we've got, of course, Councilman Chris Nettles and Councilman Michael Crane, who are also on the Trinity Metro Board. Also joined today by a few of our leadership team members, Wayne Gensler, Chad Edwards, and Dietrich Whitmore. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Oh, welcome. Yeah, thank you. So as I mentioned, I've been on the job about seven months. And in that time, I've been spending a lot of my time in having one-on-one meetings and joining a lot of community meetings, 140 in total. Sat down with 70 business, community leaders, nonprofit organizations, community groups, transit advocates, elected officials, both city and county. And, you know, the lot, quite a few breakfasts, lunches, and dinners too, to boot. And, you know, I've enjoyed every minute on the job here over the last seven months. And I want to share a little bit about, you know, what I've heard on that road tour. And, you know, my essential question when I sat down with many, many of you in this room, as well as other leaders, is how can we at Trinity Metro be helpful to you? Trinity Metro is not here, you know, we are not in business for ourselves. We are in business to solve challenges and to leverage opportunities in our community. You know, our mission here is straightforward. You might have expected me to say, you know, our, our business is mobility or transportation, but we really are about bigger, more visionary goals. You know, we're about serving our residents, connecting them to employment and educational opportunity. We help businesses access talent. We are an economic development catalyst. For those of you, for those who may not own a vehicle, can't drive, don't want to drive, we give them independence. And, you know, I think the winter storm showed us too, that, you know, we provide essential mobility during difficult, often treacherous winter weather. So what you're going to hear in this presentation today with me, and I take you along for this ride, is to sort of recap the last seven months, what we've been up to, and share some of the stories that we're hearing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you with this one thought because, you know, you're gonna hear a lot, but really I want you to have one takeaway from today. And that is Trinity Metro is relevant to our city's success today and well into the So very, very, really, I think I need to start with a, you know, the news of the week, which is we just exited a major winter event. Pretty incredible, actually. I'm, I, I think you may remember, I moved from New England. So I had my New England mindset here and thinking, oh yeah, it's just a touch of winter. But this is something altogether different. Here in the photo, we have our bus operator Sheila Boone transporting a customer in Stop, in Stop Six neighborhood. One of the services we provide is essential life-sustaining transportation. And what do I mean by that? Customers depend on us to get them to critical medical care, for example, dialysis treatment, other essential medical care. We did that uninterrupted throughout this storm. Now, we're a team, a proud team of 650 Trinity Metro employees. And I had the opportunity to ride along on the front lines with them over the last week and saw firsthand what they did and what they encountered. On Tex Rail, we had individuals out there with blowtorches and winter gear, keeping those switches moving for the trains. Conductors that stayed overnight to make sure that they could provide service the following day. We had Trinity Metro bus operators somehow navigating city streets in, in the icy conditions to provide service for most of the week. We helped, and I'm particularly proud, many of those operators helped transport people who were experiencing homelessness to warming centers. Our Trinity Metro access team was providing that life-sustaining service throughout the week. And somehow, and I can't quite understand, but somehow there were more than a dozen bike rentals from Fort Worth Bike Share. So go figure. You know, our critical regional access, and I was on Tex Rail throughout the week, met an American Airlines flight crew that was headed to Tokyo. They said many flights at the airport were going to be canceled, and it wasn't because of the icy runways. It wasn't because of the terminal conditions. It was because they were having a tough time getting flight crews to the airport to fill the jobs. So we were particularly proud that Tex Rail was there to, to provide that access. In total, we served 15,000 riders throughout the winter storm. And so remarkable accomplishment and a testament to the hard work of the men and women at Trinity Metro. And I'm, I'm really just proud to, to be part of this team. So I've got a quick video. We're gonna, we're gonna have two parts to this presentation. Again, part one is really where we are today, how we're doing. Second part, we're going to talk about where we're going in the next year to two years. I'm going to start with a short 90-second video, and this is the highlight reel of So we've been busy, very busy. And it starts with providing high-quality service that meets the needs of our community. And Tex Rail has been doing just that. We're at 74% year-over-year ridership. The gains are really tremendous. We are now, you know, we set an all-time record in December with nearly 62,000 people using the service that month. We had an employee-led ridership task force to look at how to bring back riders post-COVID. And you're going to hear more about this in a moment. But really reminding folks that we're here, this service is really a national example of how to do rail. Many cities and many places in the country, rail is a commuter-oriented service, very highly dependent on office workers. And we're fortunate here in Fort Worth that this service really serves many markets, entertainment, tourism, a lot of the downtown activity that occurs around events. So we've seen a lot of success. And I'm going to share a little story. As a rider, every, every, nearly every day of the week, I encounter lots of customers. And sometimes they see him with Trinity Metro and they'll share a story. So one story here is an example of a young man who was riding one day and said, you know, he moved here because of a high-tech opportunity here in the greater Fort Worth area. And he moved here because of not only the opportunity, but the ability to live near an international airport, to live in Grapevine, as it turns out, and have that easy access to downtown Fort Worth. And he said he wouldn't have taken the position but, but for the rail access. So here's one example of an individual that made a locational decision based on the availability of this new service. Trinity Metro Bus continues to perform quite well as well. And, you know, Tex Rail could be argued, this is a growing service and a growing market. Here in Trinity Metro Bus, you know, we've, have a well-established system and we're seeing tremendous growth there as well. 21% year-over-year ridership growth. We, in 2021, rolled out our Better Connection Initiative. And we streamlined bus routes, fixed some, fixed some issues around service, and that alone yielded a 13% gain. So running a more efficient network, a more relevant network yielded, that alone yielded the 13% boost in ridership. You know, another story here is around Tarrant County Community College. So Chancellor Elva LeBlanc So Chancellor Elva LeBlanc was kind enough to host us at her campus, and she was sharing stories about their recruitment efforts in terms of their ability to attract a larger candidate pool and talent. And she shared stories about students that, but for the transit access, would not be able to take classes or participate at Tarrant Kennedy Community College. And they thought, you know, in their long-range vision for growth of that school, transit is an essential ingredient. So how are we doing? So I can brag all I want about how we're doing locally, but how are we doing nationally and on a state level? We are leading in Texas. So among all of the transit systems across the state, we're at 85% of pre-COVID levels. And with these ridership gains that we're seeing, we are no doubt on track to exceed pre-COVID ridership. We're quite proud of this. I keep, every month, we update the slide, and I, I'm always waiting to see if we're still leading, and this trend is continuing uninterrupted, and we're quite, quite proud of that. And so again, this goes, speaks volumes to, you know, we're focused on the customer experience, focused on high-quality service, and continuing to grow the markets that we serve. Quick update on our operating budget. We are a quarter-billion-dollar enterprise. That includes our operating expenses as well as our capital investments. So every year, we contribute, inject a quarter billion in direct investment into our communities, but there's a multiplier effect behind these numbers. I'll just point out that sales tax, while an important, very, very important part of our program, sales tax revenue accounts for about 40% of our ongoing revenue. The other 60% is generated through matching grants, federal contributions, contributions from NCT cog and others. So where are we going? I'm gonna get into a look forward now. Now, I'll say, I'll start by saying that, a few things. One is we're undertaking a long-range strategic plan for the agency. So what you're gonna see today are updates on sort of tactical investments over the next year to two. We are undertaking a major relook at the future of Trinity Metro. That's gonna take time. That's gonna be a multi-year effort. It's gonna involve all of you, certainly, and our riders and other community leaders. And that, more on that another time. So today, I'm gonna focus on the next one to, one to three years. First is bus stops, the experience, I'm sorry, first is bus seats. Onboard our buses, it's the customer experience. We're looking at the overall comfort of the ride on Trinity Metro Bus. I would give a shout-out to our team bringing this forward in my first few weeks on the job, said, you know, that onboard experience could use a little spruce up. We've been hearing from our customers. So we're gonna roll this campaign out this year. The seats are somewhere in the room right now. Thank you. Thanks, Chief Nokes. These seats will be now upholstered, a synthetic product that allows us to clean them and keep a high-quality, clean experience. We have 5,700 bus seats, so they'll be rolled out in the coming year. It will take time to see the improvements. They are cushioned. They give folks a nice degree of comfort. Go ahead and check them out at the, later, after the meeting's adjourned. Mayor Matty, I think last time we were together, you had said, we really need to do something about our bus stops. We see folks waiting in the, at the side of the road, often in the rain, in the sun. What are we doing about bus stops? This is a major focus for us. We have 1,700 bus stops in the Trinity Metro system. They are in all sorts of places. Sometimes they're near retail, sometimes they're quite lonely out in the hinterlands of Fort Worth. We are now evaluating how to do this, and, and so we have bus stops already installed, new bus stops on Hemp Hill. Thank you, Wayne. Over on Hemp Hill and Maddox. So if you go over there today, you'll see them. We are gonna be soliciting a customer feedback. We have to go through an abbreviated procurement this spring. Our goal is to have the campaign up and running mid-year. One of the things we're gonna do is introduce new elements to our bus stops. So nighttime lighting, every bus stop will get a light. So if you're out there in the dark, you just hit a button. That'll give you a solar-powered light, brings an additional degree of security and visibility, upgrading bus stop benches, waste cans, but coupled with a mobile and online experience. So it's not all about bus stops. Bus stops with better real-time information for our customers, and we've been rolling out that real-time information as we speak. So if you go to our mobile app, you'll see in real-time the location of our buses. And so this will all come together, and the higher-volume bus stops will get additional real-time signage and information, not featured in this photo. We're excited. So we talked about partnerships. One of the, oh, I want, so, David, forgot to mention our conversation. So David, you have been gracious and helpful in working with us on partnering in the bus stops. So in order to roll these bus stops out, in many cases, we need concrete pads, we need site work, we need curb cuts. And so I reached out to David and asked if we could work together, the city, on installing a lot of the site work so that when we come in and install the shelter, it's more turnkey. And so thank you, David, for your offer of support. And I want to also give a shout-out to William Johnson for all the help you've been giving us, really supportive leadership, really. We don't, again, exist in a vacuum, but we work closely with the city, and we're proud of, we're proud of our partnership. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Botanic Gardens. So Patrick Newman there, new leader, pretty visionary. I'm pretty excited about his new energy. And he said, what can we do to work together around our bus stop campaign? So we're doing just that. We're gonna be looking at University Drive initially to bring that Botanic Gardens experience out to the street so that folks waiting for transit have that sort of experience of experiencing Botanic Gardens, but then partnering with them on bringing the Botanic Gardens to other places in Fort Worth. So looking at opportunities to bring some of that programming to our major bus hubs. More to follow. I don't want to get ahead of Patrick on this, but he's gonna be coming out to walk some of our sites and figure out how to bring, and we're very focused on, not necessarily focusing on Central Station, but bringing that out into the communities throughout Councilman Flores, you and I have sat down, and I know you've talked about better access to the North Side. We're excited about the opportunities there on the North Side, both the really vital and vibrant North Side community as a whole, the Stockyards, certainly, and of course, Panther Island in between. So we are in the process, again, not ready to roll out the total vision here today, but a new dash route that'll be branded and be very experiential. One of the, one of the challenges with bringing folks onto transit, if you're not a transit user, there's a little bit of trepidation about what transit's all about. And, you know, we have 9.4 million visitors to Fort Worth every year, and what can we do to have them leave the car at the airport and just jump on Tex Rail, come on downtown, stay at one of our great hotels, and then jump on over to the Stockyards, North Side, or over to Dicky's Arena, and not have to worry about parking? So we're really thinking about this comprehensively. This program that we're working on will be very experiential. We're thinking outside the box. What can we do to make this sort of part of the North Side experience? So when you board, having lots of tie-ins with local businesses, have, you know, a Western theme. And more to come on this. TNP Station, we will be working, we're working with Andy Taft, Downtown Fort Worth Inc., has a big new vision for better connecting TNP Terminal to Lancaster. It will feature a grand-new pedestrian entrance that you see here, really complements the emerging development now at the Omni, the Shart, and Texas A&amp;M. Construction's gonna begin in early 20, this year, and funding is already in hand. And the partners include Downtown Fort Worth Inc., the city of Fort Worth is a partner, and the TNP Condominium Association, to name a few. And this dovetails with economic development that is in progress or under, a negotiation is underway for redevelopment loan vicary on the opposite side of TNP. Can't share too much about that right now, but we are in conversations with a developer. So you might wonder why Baylor Scott &amp; White is on the screen. This is the feature photo I thought we should highlight, which is Tex Rail Extension to the Medical District is on track. We have a program manager onboard. We will be advertising for a final design company to do, to take it to final design mid-year, this year, complete that design next year with construction to begin and operationally complete in late 2026. Really a tremendous project in a number of respects. Provides, of course, better access to the Medical District. Those 49,000 jobs that are there really provides not only the downtown link, but that important link to the airport as well. We see this as supercharging the Tex Rail ridership story. So pretty tremendous, pretty high-impact for a relatively, in the world of rail construction, a relatively incremental investment. A pretty innovative program that's up and coming is the Alliance Express Service. This is a new service to link. I talked about the role in solving challenges and leveraging opportunities. Lots of job creation in Alliance, lots of employee, potential employees in the East Side of Fort Worth. And we're thinking, what can we do, and this has been around for a while, but we're now moving forward, to better connect the East Side with the Alliance opportunity? So these buses are in, are now being purchased. They'll be all-electric coach-style, high-over-the-road-type coaches. Three stops on this route will run from the East Side at a location, we're working with the county, to secure a location with some parking, go on to downtown Fort Worth Central Station, and then on to Alliance. And we're working with the Hillwood Group to locate a new mobility center in Alliance. The idea being that when you get to Alliance, you're still gonna have that last-mile need, and what can we do to make that more central? And so folks would come in on these express services that would operate over the managed lanes, we would have a guaranteed trip time, and if your trip isn't on time, we will refund your. So very exciting, very exciting to, and it looks like we may have a question.
No, I was just gonna tell you, you missed one slide. You showed us Baylor Scott &amp; White, but there's also activity at Trinity and 820 for Tex Rail.
Yes. Yes, I could go, I was told I had a time limit, so I'm happy, I'm happy to come back to that.
You can, you can just talk about it, because it's really important to us on the East Side. I'm real proud of what you're doing there.
Yes. So on Tex Rail? Yes.
Trinity and 820.
Yes, I'm gonna come to that slide next.
Okay.
There you go. You asked.
Real quickly, Rich, go back real quick on the motor. How, when will this be up and running to transport workforce to Alliance?
So we expect about an 18-month lead time on the electric buses, and so we expect to award a contract sometime May or June of this year. I'm looking at, okay, good. And which means we would have these buses in hand at the end of '24. So that would be the very earliest, so I would say early '25 is what we're really looking at for the start. Yep. So Trinity Lake Station, we're building a brand-new rail station on Trinity Railway Express. The station is well into development. It'll be a new station anchor, local economic development that's occurring there, regionally very accessible. It will relocate the current station from Richland Hills over to this new location. We have, part of this project is an additional investment to double-track a segment of Trinity Railway Express. That's part of a federal grant that we've received through NCT cog. In total, $60 million are being invested here.
I mentioned that, Richard, because we don't get many wins on the East Side of Fort Worth. This is a big win. And so that's why I mentioned it.
We're very excited about it. This station will provide regional access and local access to the community. What we're looking at here is a reinvention of T R A. T R A's been around a long time. T R A needs to be recapitalized. What I mean by that, it was launched 25 years ago. It's a little bit tired. The equipment needs to be updated. This double-tracking segment enables future capacity enhancements, improves reliability. We have, we're beginning a conversation about what T R A looks like down the road. Really, it should be more efficient, faster, more convenient, more regular schedules, and that, that's enabled in part by double-tracking. So I'm happy to come back to this, the city council to talk with you in the future about investment plans. And remember, that, this line is in partnership with our, in Dallas County. So, you know, just to wrap up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a few observations. One is Trinity Metro is incredibly relevant to our community, and sometimes you don't get that in the numbers. And so we spend a lot of time as a leadership team riding and talking with people individually. And what we hear are these personal stories about people who really have an ability to participate in public life, to participate and go to school, to get a job, to be independent. I'll share two stories that really struck me over the last few weeks. One is we were walking through Fort Worth Central Station, and there was a group of young students with special needs, and they were getting a tour of transit. They were in high school, and they were sort of figuring out how to use transit. And I stopped and spent a few minutes with them to hear them, and they were joyful, absolutely joyful, about getting to ride transit and to learn about Trinity Metro. And they were joyful about the opportunity to be able to get around independently and use our services. In many cases, they can or won't be able to drive, and so Trinity Metro represents independence for them, and that's pretty, that's a pretty powerful idea. You know, another, another story are the folks that are able to get around and commute every day to essential jobs in our area. And these are individuals, in many cases, that hold these really critical jobs in different sectors, whether it be healthcare, logistics. In many cases, they tell us, and I've had these personal conversations with individuals, that they say to, they say to us, if you weren't running today, I would not be able to get to my job. And these are folks in, again, in the logistics industries around our region, during the snowstorm, the how-to-get-to-work. Many of us were able to shift to remote work. We gotta remember, I think it's important to remember, that not everyone can, has that option. And so what it's saying in conclusion is that as we look forward and talk about opportunities for public transportation, we want to do it through the lens of how we create value, how we be even more relevant than we are today. Our goal is to help solve challenges in our community and to leverage those opportunities. So we're gonna continue to listen, we're gonna continue to engage, and I'm grateful for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Questions from council? Go ahead, Carlos.
Rich, thanks very much. Appreciate your, you know, our discussions and the responsiveness of Trinity Metro and the board to improve and expand, you know, our public transit options. Just a couple of things, and I know that you, at the time that I mentioned this originally, you had not yet joined Trinity Metro, but there is a particular bus stop that I continue to have a lot of concerns about, located at Northwest 18th Street in Texas 199. With that said, I think that, you know, essentially, I think it's unprotected and a bit dangerous, given the very busy thoroughfare it's on. As you know, Tex Dot is about to, you know, start a project that's going to expand Texas 199 and make improvements to it. I don't know how that's going to impact that easement up until the retaining walls that are there, where that bus stop is, but I'd encourage you to take a look at it, continue to talk to William Johnson. I think Kelly Porter may be the point of contact with NTPW. That is a liaison, you know, for Tex Dot. I've already spoken to him to kind of give us an update on what that project particulars are and where they're at. And again, thank you, you know, for the rollout and integration plans for the dash and the route improvements to 15 and the bus wrap so that we can start to make it easier for riders to identify the bus that services a particular area and identify with said area. So thanks again.
So Councilman Flores, we'll follow up with you on that relocation of that bus stop. And then with respect to the dash Stockyards route, I would love to come back and unveil that to city council whenever you'll have us. It'll be probably a few more months before we're ready to do that.
Oh, yeah. Wave a bated breath. Thank you.
I have a compliment to the mayor. And when this new council came on board, they had the craziest idea of putting council members on the board. And I just, you know, we don't do that. And, but this, this new council, I'm convinced their presence is what brought us such a well-received report today. And I could only look at Dietrich behind me and Jeff Ba- And I could only look at Deitra behind me and Jeff back there. Maybe they'll agree, but hats off for doing something different.
Yeah. And thanks to Michael and to Chris for serving. I know it's an added, you know, not burden, but responsibility that I know that you each probably don't have time for. So, showing up has been a big deal. And everybody I've talked to at Trinity Metro has really appreciated having council leadership there. There's no reason for us to fight. We've got to get along, and we're a great partnership right now, thanks to y'all. So, we really do appreciate it. Go ahead, Dave. Michael.
Hey, thanks, Rich, for the presentation. One of the things I want to point out that you do, that you didn't give yourself credit for, is the employee engagement that you're doing that I haven't really seen before and really commending them in a lot of different ways, communicating with them in a lot of different ways. You sent out this newsletter that we get a copy of as part of the board, which I'm appreciative of. I'm disappointed you didn't show the bus rodeo up here. And when you got to let me drive, I got to drive a bus or a go-kart wrapped as a bus, which was, was a fun day. But games like that, where you're engaging the staff and rewarding them in a lot of different ways, and pointing them out at our board meetings. I'm glad you brought up like the efficiency, efficacy of all the things that you're doing. And I think you're bringing new eyes to an old system. And I'm appreciative of that in a lot of different ways, because what I said to you when we were on the board or appointed the board is, the people that need this, need this. The people that need to get their jobs, the people that need to get to places, need the services. And so, the more efficient that we can make it, the more routine that we can make it for them, makes it easier for them to get the jobs. I've got populations in my district that need this to put food on the table. So, I'm appreciative of that. It's not in my district, but the bus stops on Hemp Hill, I'm appreciative of that. I own a business in that, in that district. So, seeing that, it's in Councilwoman Beck's district, I know she's appreciative of it. But as the mayor had said, she drives down the, what? As she drives, or we drive down the street, and we see people out in the heat or out in the rain waiting for the bus, knowing that this is their mode of transportation, it's disheartening. So, I'm glad that we're putting some focus on that and making sure people are comfortable. And then, your staff is wonderful, I'll say that. I watch, there's a lot here that, I know that they're just looking at things differently. And as you and I have talked about, just a new vision for Trinity Metro, what that means, what that looks like. Because again, because we have to keep helping those that, that need the help, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Michael, thank you for all that feedback. We really appreciate you and Chris Nettles. Just, you've been tremendous supporters and advocates for us. We, we do what we do only with the help and support of board members in our community. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Rich? Counsel? Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Victor Turner, Neighborhood Services Director, to talk about our 2023 housing tax credit applications.
It's that time of the year again where we get developers from across the country applying for low-income housing tax credits with Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This year, we received 10 applications all across the city. And so, we're going to share with you staff's recommendations for providing resolutions for those projects. This is just a graph showing the process of the state receiving tax credits and the guidelines for applying and operation of the program is the state's qualified allocation plan. And so, the city reflects a lot of those policies as its local policy. Next, the developer identifies an area and submits an application. They do that partly by adopting or adhering to some of the local policies that we have put in place. TDHCA reviews the application and makes an award. So, that's just a real quick snapshot of how the process goes. The deadline for the application is March 1st. This is a timeline. Back in the fall, we had a forum with developers and laid out some of the policies that we were including in our 2023 policy. Then there was approval by you all in November. And then, we are skipping ahead. Here we are today in February with recommendations that you'll consider at next week's council meeting. What does QAP, the Qualified Allocation Plan, say about policies? In ours, it's mainly geared toward notification. So, you can see that the elected officials have to be notified. We also require school districts be notified, neighborhood organizations. For resolutional support, a 17 points. Resolution of no objection, 14 points. And no resolution at all, zero points. Also, they can get an additional point if there is a commitment of funding. And we generally do that by waiver, permits, and fees that equates to more than $500. This is an overlay of our local criteria on top of TDHCA's. One of the things that the city has done over the last several years is including our policy that at least 10% of the units are for those residents are 0% to 30% of AMI. That's a huge need in our city, and all of those developments have adhered to that. Also, located in a high-growth area or in a choice neighborhood area, and you can see the other notifications I previously mentioned, neighborhood associations. One thing that we added this past year, if it's going to be tax-exempt, that they provide us with, the developer provides, provide us with documentation of what that exemption Notifications 30 days prior to application submission, council district which is located, neighborhood services is notified, school district, all of that I previously mentioned. So, I mentioned about getting the $500 or more for, of development funding. These are some of the permits and stuff that could be included in those waiver fees. And then, the bottom in green, they'll have to consult with those departments to get those waivers. As I mentioned, we received 10 applications this year. We're considering nine. One of them withdrew, which we'll get to. And as I mentioned, there in several other council districts, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and you can see where those projects are located on the map shown. First one here is in council district four, the Reserve at Basswood. See, it is a family development of 72 units on Basswood. This project will pay taxes. There is a requirement for a zoning change. In council district five, the Avenue at Lancaster, senior project, is also in the NES. This particular one and the following one, Babers Manor, there is a rule with TDHCA, two-miles-same-year rule. So, those two projects are within two miles of one another. So, only one of those will be considered by TDHCA. So, it's important on the local level how we provide that support. So, I know the Babers project is in a choice neighborhood area, which is one of several phases. So, that's also a very critical project. Both of them are important, but I wanted to point that out. Babers Manor, as I mentioned, in the Stop 6 area, and you can see it's an 80-unit development for Worth Housing Solution and McCourt-McBarren Developers. Bell Station Apartments also in council district five, 80 units. Zoning change required on it as well. Another one in council district five, popular area this year, Lawset at Redwood. Brumpton Housing, Community Housing Corporation, that is a CHODO or Community Housing Development Organization out of Houston. So, it's not a Fort Worth CHODO. Another one in council district five, reserves at Cottonwood Creek, 94-unit family complex. Council district six, on Kingswood, 90-unit senior development. Council district seven, Timberland Heights, 90-unit family development. And council district eight, another family development, 96 units, the Heights at Crowley. And this is the one that was withdrawn at 900 Bridgewood Drive, 120 unit. It met all the requirements. It was withdrawn at the developer's request. So, our recommendations, as I mentioned, we had 10. They met our local policies. The one that we have withdrawn here also met it, but it was withdrawn. And we are requesting that you all consider those recommendations. Our next step is next week at council meeting that you all consider those resolutions. And then, they'll, they'll be able to submit their applications on March 1st with a final award in July. I will say, we appreciate the amount of interest in Fort Worth, getting 10 applications for our city to address the lack of affordable housing is, is very good. We know all of those won't get awarded. It's a very competitive process. I think last year, we may have one or two. So, even though we had 10, it's highly unlikely that we will receive awards for 10. Questions, comments?
I want to make it plain what, what my position is going to be. And it will be of no opposition to Lancaster, which is Craig, and maintain support for Babers Manor. And for those of you who are new on the council, you saw a lot of activity coming toward district five. We've never seen that. Michael can tell you, he was here working for Bird at the time. We've never seen that, so I don't think that's normal. But I'm just real appreciative to community stakeholders who are able to impact the community in terms of crime, in terms of scholastic achievement, because those are things that kept developers from wanting to come to five. And so, now we have them everywhere, as far, far east as Bell Helicopter Area. So, that, that's very unusual, but make it very, very clear, Babers Manor is very special to Victor, myself, this city, because Mr. Babers, as the retired Regional Administrator for HUD, walked with us hand in hand to get us to where we are now. And I'll never forget him.
Questions, any other comments for council? From council? No? Victor, thank you very much. Appreciate you and Amy. Next up, we have Chief Noakes and Valerie Washington. I think Val is up first to give us an update on the police oversight monitor. And then, Chief Noakes will brief us on the proposed police policy advisory board.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, city managers. I am here with Chief Noakes to kick off a presentation and provide an update on the Office of the Police Monitor. There's been kind of a lot of things happening since you last heard from Kim Neal, who unfortunately took a position in Arlington, West Virginia. So, she is no longer with us. And David appointed me to be the interim police monitor as we work on finding her replacement. So, I have just a brief presentation I want to walk through before I turn it over to Chief So, I think a lot of y'all will remember and have heard us talk about the Race and Culture Task Force and some of the recommendations that came from that task force. Recommendations were provided to mayor and council in December of 2018. There were, I think there were a total of 10 categories that we looked at. I know number one was discrimination in education. Two was failure to acknowledge the pervasiveness of racism. Number three was discrimination in economic development. And number four was a focus on criminal justice issues. And those criminal justice issues centered on making sure we had better recruiting tools in place, and we were recruiting and hiring officers that represented the community in which they were serving. There was some work to do recruiting, starting with youth to get them interested in the profession and get them eager to serve in the future. And there was also a lot of interest in creating civilian oversight for the police department. I think it's timely to have this conversation as we continue to hear about police issues in other jurisdictions, Akron, Ohio, most recently Memphis, Tennessee. There is definitely a need for civilian oversight, I should say, independent civilian oversight in our community. Once we had the Race and Culture Task Force recommendations, back in 2020 then, in February, we amended the city code and created the Independent Office of the Police Monitor. It reports directly to the city manager. As you can just see here on the org chart, we knew that was important as we worked with community stakeholders, to really show that there was independence from the police department, and there would be a way that oversight could be, police oversight could be put in place here in Fort Worth, again, without direct activity and influence from the police department. I wanted to quickly just show the current organizational staffing for the Office of the Police Monitor. And I have some of the staff here that I would like to introduce, because they have been doing heavy lifting for the last three years in establishing this office, going out and doing community research, really trying to understand what type of civilian oversight would be best for our community. And so, I want to start with, we have the vacant spot with Kim Neal, which again, I have an update on that. We're actively recruiting. And we have Catherine Huckabee, who serves as the Assistant Director. Catherine, if you just want to stand up and raise your hand, just so people can get used to working with you. We have Erin Ragsdale, who's a Senior Management Analyst. Erin's in the audience. We have Nathan Benson, who's a Senior Policy Advisor. Kenny Smith, another policy advisor. Kaitlin Naylor, I saw her. She's an intern with us, a law student. We have Branigan Contreras, who's our admin assistant. And then, we wanted to show that through the fiscal year '23 budget, we're adding two additional positions to this office. We're hiring an additional policy advisor and an education program coordinator. We are working actively with human resources now to get those positions filled. I believe we've gone out to market a couple of times, but the staff is actively reviewing applications and want to make sure that they get the right fit for that position. Just really quickly, the Office of Police of the Oversight Monitor really is the civilian oversight agency for City of Fort Worth in the oversight and the accountability for Fort Worth Police Department. Again, they provide independent accountability, and their goal is to help build trust, public trust, and better communication between communities and their law enforcement partners. In this time, and again, I have to give tremendous credit to Kim Neal, the former director, who again, spent so much time building and putting this office together. There are, is that one too? Couple of areas that I just want to call out here on this list, as far as how OPOM is actively engaged. OPOM actively audits body-worn cameras, footage. They monitor use-of-force reports. They help identify policy and practice changes that they can recommend to the police department. They're out in the community. A big part of police oversight is educating the community on what oversight models are available, and then also determining within that community what type of oversight model would be best here for Fort Worth. And in a relationship where the Oversight Office has great relationships with the community, but they can also partner with, partner with law enforcement and really bridge that connection. The Police Oversight Office works with data collection and analysis. They're consistently looking at police data, crunching numbers, looking at citizen complaints especially. It was really important for this office to provide an intake point if citizens did have complaints against the police and they didn't want to have to deal directly with the police to file a complaint, which I think is fair.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of times when you want to file a complaint, you don't want to have to go directly to that person that you had an issue with. And I appreciate that the office has spent time really honing in on that complaint process and providing an independent space for citizens to engage and, again, share their issues with law enforcement when they occur. One thing that the office is seeking to get into is mediation and restorative justice. A lot of communities have implemented, implemented mediation programs, especially for lower-level offenses in the community, where a lot of times, it's just a matter of getting the community person and the police officer who they maybe had an issue with, just sitting across the table and talking to each other. A lot of times, just setting up that forum creates trust and opportunities to build relationships in ways that you don't get in a confrontational manner. So, the- So the office is really working hard to continue building on that. I think that that will be one of the, one of the drivers of the new director when they come into place to make sure that a mediation community program is put into place. As far as data, this office has been incredibly active. Again, the office is three years old. They hit the ground running. We hired Kim, I want to say a month before COVID. So she really had to come into an office and an atmosphere and really build something from scratch. We wanted to show just some of the data measures comparing 21 to 22. And just to show, we understand that 21, we were recovering still from the pandemic, but we're showing these numbers. If you look, for example, at the contacts, and that's where a community member reaches out to the OPOM office, those are steadily increasing. If you look at the uses of force, those unfortunately have increased. And I would say that when you're looking at this data set, it's actually having someone and staff available to look at these and to look at the information. Chief, we're not saying that you had more issues in 22 than you did in 21 necessarily. We'd have to do some more analysis with that, but it's just having someone who's looking at those reports. They look at every single report and are able to have a dialogue with the Police Department. This also is really a testament to the community engagement that this office has done since their inception to again, get the word out and educate people about civilian oversight in their community. And I think really in closing on this brief update, again, not a travesty, I think that's probably a strong word, but definitely it was hard to lose Kim Neal. She had a lot of momentum. And I've promised the staff and the office that we would not lose that momentum. I personally care about civilian oversight and want to be a support system as we bridge to getting a new director in place. We have engaged with Human Resources and have selected a firm called Raftellus. They have experience in police monitor hiring. I believe they're working on processes in, in the Colorado, in the state of Colorado right now. Our goal is to have an informal report at the March 7th work session, providing updates on the timelines and also how we plan to engage with the public. And that's all I had for you. I wanted to again, just provide a brief update in the absence of the Police Monitor to let you know that the work continues to go on. And we're looking forward to supporting the chief and his presentation today, which includes the Office of Police Oversight in his plans to build stronger community connections with the citizens of Fort Worth.
Thank you, Val.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much, ACM Washington, for that presentation. I'm excited to be here today. I appreciate so much the opportunity to come here and be able to tell you about this re-envisioned Community Advisory Board. Trust can be broken overnight, but trust can't be built overnight. And there is a long history of mistrust with the police with some communities in Fort Worth. And that's something we've been working on for a long time. And I want to thank the officers that are going out there every single day, doing the job really well, professionally treating people with dignity and respect. And I also want to thank the community members that have been invested in the conversations that have helped us progress with our training. We now have some of the best policies you're going to find anywhere. The expert panel that just came and reviewed us helped us out with some of our policies, committed us on what we had, such as our de-escalation policies, our duty to intervene and report policies, policies on procedural justice, and the way they're all integrated into our training now. And it's not just a training class for each one of the topics. It's interwoven into what we're doing. We're working to get it interwoven into our culture. Without the community's assistance, that's very difficult to do. Also at our academy, we have a less militaristic, more learning environment style. We're able to have conversations with our recruits. We encourage civil discourse, as Councilmember Beck mentioned earlier. And we've expanded on a lot of our community-based programs as well. Let's get right into this, though. Sure. I wanted to start with our mission statement, because this is the guide, what we do. The Fort Worth Police Department provides quality service in partnership with the community to create a safe environment for all. That's how we hope to build trust, by showing accountability, by collaborating, by being transparent. So for the Community Advisory Board, our goal is to empower Fort Worth residents to work with the PD in a collaborative working group to further the goal of fair, just, and dignified treatment of every person while keeping our residents safe from crime and disorder. So I've highlighted previous here, and there were a lot of people that gave a lot of input on this presentation. I want to thank them for their input. This was the Policy Advisory Committee. That was the name in its previous form. Brought by another chief, my understanding is some great things were done with the Policy Advisory Committee. But we've listened to concerns, one of this council, concerns of some community members and internal concerns as well, on how we could make this entity more effective and more community focused. What they were to do was develop, make recommendations, develop policies that we might not already have, make revisions to current policies and recommendations about eliminating or canceling policies that might be problematic. Here's one of the first glaring issues we saw. This lists 12 different people, but allowed a maximum of 13 members. Eight of those 13 members were sworn, meaning officers of the Fort Worth Police Department of various ranks and assignments. It also included a civilian member of our department who's a policy expert. So nine of the 13, and in this case 12, were made up of Fort Worth Police Department employees. The meetings were held twice a year. So every six months, this group would get together. We thought that might not be enough. They had a chair that provided, presided over the meetings. And it even said here that they could cancel the meetings if there was no agenda. Well, if you're only meeting every six months, it's highly unlikely there will not be an agenda to talk about. Now, Fort Worth, we've had a long-held belief in community involvement. And for the Police Department specifically, as many of you who have been at Fort Worth a long time may know, former Chief Thomas Wyndham played a key role in making that happen. Many of the community-based programs we have right now were brought by him. Continuing with that belief in the power of engagement with the community, though we're doing all the things that we are, after talking with the community, we understood, you know what, there's even a greater need for direct communication and recommendations from the community. We realized there's a need to give even more of a voice to the community when it comes to our policies, our practices, and our procedures. Hence, the Community Advisory Board is created. So here's our strategy. We're going to collaborate as a Community Advisory Board. It will collaborate with us and OPOM, the Office of Police Oversight Monitor, to develop a more transparent, fair, and equitable Police Department through review and recommendations of our policies, our procedures, and our practices. I felt it was important to include practices because as we know from the expert panel that came and spoke about the review of our policies, they said our policies are great. What we need to be doing is making sure the policies are being followed in practice. The duties for the Community Advisory Board. So we want them to review and understand our policies and procedures. Give them a peek behind the curtain, if you will, what we have. These things are posted online anyway, but we want to bring them in and actually talk with them about them. They can gather, evaluate, and discuss information related to our policies, serve it as additional avenue to receive complaints. We talked about that, ACM Washington mentioned how OPOM can receive complaints about Fort Worth PD. This group will be able to do the same thing, and either forward it to us or OPOM, whichever they prefer. We want the group to identify policing issues that should be reviewed, develop a clear and direct information brochure to inform the community on the board, on what it does, and how they can contact the board about issues or concerns they may have. The board, the CAB, the Community Advisory Board will provide updates and place those updates on the city's website and our website as well, in the interest of transparency. Help us identify problems where we can improve, obtain that input from the community members and stakeholders, collaborate with those stakeholders and subject matter experts, and propose the policies. And they review the implementation once the recommendations are made. So we had a max of 13 members on the prior board. We're looking at a maximum of 19 members. And the reason we're doing that, when we started looking at the various areas where we're hearing concerns from the community about policing, it covers a broad range. We want to make sure we leave that number larger, not too large, that the, the number is too cumbersome for any kind of civil discourse, but big enough that we cover our bases. Want a diverse array of individuals from a cross-section of the Fort Worth community. People who will come tell us what we need to hear, not maybe what we want to hear. People who will be honest with us, people who will be direct with us. We're not looking for people who are going to come to us and tell us we're doing everything right and everything's rosy. We're looking for people who will be direct and honest. Some of the areas, civic and social service organizations, business and economic development, to reach those business owners and the business community in Fort Worth who also has a stake when it comes to public safety. Faith leaders who have a voice in the community. And then youth and education, which is always important when it comes to public safety. This is the most exciting part of the presentation for me. And not all of the members who have committed were able to attend today because of prior commitments. And frankly, some had to leave because they were here. But as, as happens with meetings, they go along and they had to leave. But I do want to recognize all who agreed to be on the board and specifically recognize those who are here in attendance today. So we have not in attendance Rabbi Andrew Bloom with Ahavash Shalom, Susan Garnett, who is the CEO of MHMR of Tarrant County, Felipe Gutierrez with One Safe Place, and is also a proponent of the LGBTQ community. Lauren King, who's the Executive Director of the Tarrant County Homeless Coalition. Annette Landeros, the President of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for being here. Parish Lowry, who's the President of the Baptist Ministers Union, a pastor of Greater Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, also a business owner here in Fort Worth. He planned to attend, but had something come up and he's not able. Judge Brent Carr, I don't believe Judge Carr was able to attend. And I had several people recommend him and did not know how much innovation he had taken part in when it comes to court systems in Tarrant County, helping create and presiding over specialty courts such as the mental health court, Veterans Treatment Court, and a court specifically for women involved in sex trafficking. Next, we have Brother Lee Muhammad, who's a student minister at Mohammed Mosque Number 52. Thank you so much, sir, for being here. In the back, we have David Seines, who's the Chief Innovation Officer with Fort Worth ISD. Ty Stimson was here, but had to step out, and he's with the Fort Worth Metropolitan Black Chamber of Commerce. Estrus Tucker, who we all know, he is out of town. But he's one that's been very involved in many communities, one specifically is Como, and any matters having to do with race and equity. Marali Vanam, right here in the middle. He's with the Hindu Temple of Greater Fort Worth and also a board member on the Indian American Friendship Council. And last but not least, she had to step out. But Mrs. Stella Williams, with the Fort Worth and Tarrant County Chapter of the NAACP, has also agreed to be a member. If you would, please help me thank them for their participation. So one of the concerns we kept hearing was, was officers being members of the, of the board. The more I thought about that, especially if we're talking voting members on the board, the more I realized if you have the very people who are being affected by the vote, voting, I could see where that could be a conflict of interest. One thing I talked about when I came before and spoke with this is we want to have a seat at the table for that collaboration. So what we have done is created two positions for liaisons and a strictly advisory role. And two very special people were chosen for that role. And if any of you have worked with them, either within city government or in the community, you know exactly why they were chosen. I'd like to recognize Deputy Chief Buck Wheeler and Commander Monica Martin. Help me thank them as well. For training and orientation, we've worked with OPOM, with the City Manager's Office, the City Attorney's Office, and our Chief Equity Officer, develop our training program for our CAB members. Some of the training will be around things like the authority structure and policy creation and management of the department, use of force, orders and directive systems, body worn cameras, investigative stops, arrest, search, and seizure, constitutional and criminal protections, and civilian oversight of law enforcement. We ask them to do at least one write-in with an officer, so they can get an idea of what it is like to live the life of an officer for one day at least, to see them work with the communities, to see them go out and serve, to see them go out and protect, and get that perspective that they may not have ever had. We'll have the City Attorney's Office helping us out with some Texas Public Information Act and city's ethics codes training. And we'll have up to 90 days for that training to be completed. We're going to have continuing education. I think it's important that we don't just bring a group in, give them training for 90 days, and then stop. I think it's critical that we have continuing education based on the needs of the board members, things that they want to learn about, to have a better understanding of what we're doing. And within six months, we're going to have a, the rules of procedure created. This will be by the board members. Talk about protocol, procedures, scheduling agendas, and it can be amended by a majority vote of the CAB. The plan is now, instead of meeting twice a year, meet at least quarterly. But the chair and the board will have the opportunity to call additional meetings as they see fit. For instance, had this board been in place, when we saw what happened to Tyree Nichols in Memphis recently, there's a good chance this board would have called and said, we need to talk. We need to sit down and discuss this. That would be an opportunity where maybe the board or chair would want to do that. I started with this and I want to end with this, because it's the partnerships with the community that help us do our job so well. We're trying to address some of the issues that we saw with the prior board. You saw a lot of verbiage in here that came from the resolution. You saw verbiage here that was more aligned with what was presented earlier because we're trying to find something that we know in our hearts will work. But we know we have to earn that trust. I'm saying words to you today. I've got words on slides. It will be only through our actions and our results that we're able to earn that trust. And I hope you will support us in that decision. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions, comments from council members? Anybody? No?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start out.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do, I kind of want to address, I guess, the first, both of the reports that was given today. And I kind of want to address the fact, I think some of the words that ACM Val talked about in the first paragraph of her statements was that the community wants to make sure that there is an independent process of reviewing the Police Department. And when I look at the agenda today, we put these two presentations together. The Officer Police Monitor, as well as your new Policy Procedure Board. That is a red flag for me and the community. Number one is because we want the Officer Police Monitor to act independently of the Police Department. We do want collaboration, don't get us wrong. We want collaboration. But when you put these two on the same agenda simultaneously together, it shows that there is more than a collaboration, but there is a work behind door, closed doors. And that is what we don't want the City of Fort Worth, nor the community, to have the sight that we are working together, but not in collaboration with the community. So that's one of the first red flags that I see. The second thing I want to kind of just talk about, and I appreciate your, your community. The second thing I want to kind of just talk about, and I appreciate your, your Community Advisory Board Chief, one of the things that we've been trying to do better as the city of Fort Worth, or at least I have asked, I think other council members have asked too, is to have a better opportunity to digest these recommendations. So as of today, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so I'm not able to digest and have full thought patterns. So I will ask David Cook if they can come back with this again so that we can have more of a dialogue, discussion. When I'm looking at the advisory board, and if you go back to the slide of the, the members selected, I have great respect for a lot of these members that you have selected, but when I look at the selection, there is a, a group of people that I think that is missing. One, you stated in your, and if you have any comments, you can stop me anytime, you stated in your presentation is that you don't want yes people, you want people that can really challenge whatever the policies and the procedures is. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying any of these are, but there is a selected of people who we know who are vulgar, are very persistent about policing and changing in the community, and I don't see any of them on this list. I don't see age groups within twenty to thirty-five. I mean, I'm not sure how old Ty is, but that age group, that bracket that is missing of individuals that we have seen nationally who has warranted or been involved in policing or policing issues, that age group is not there, that we're missing. The majority of some of the black pastors who came in opposition or in support of the Oversight Board, which we, you know, I know that's not on the table that we're discussing, but this board that you're presenting is basically your recommendation obsolete of the Oversight Board not passing, or your, your non-support of the Oversight Board. And so I don't see some of those voices on this, and that is alarming. Now, I think this is your ability to establish a presence as the chief and as the Oversight Board, so it is not our position to tell you who to put on the board, but I think this is just some of my concerns and original thoughts that I think we're missing some voices on, on your advisory board.
May I address that one?
Sure.
Before we continue? One of the slides previously mentioned up to nineteen members, as you noticed, is only thirteen. There are thirteen members here. There are some I'm still in conversations with, but until they commit, I don't feel comfortable putting their names there, but also thought maybe after this conversation I would get even more suggestions. So you see thirteen here, that means we have more that we can actually place on the board.
Thank you for that. A couple of other things, and I, I, I do appreciate this slide, well, this presentation a lot more because it gives us a little more teeth, or when we start having the debate or discussion around the oversight. One of the things that was a bit, a bit contentious to the Oversight Board was receiving complaints, and I see in your advisory board, you're going to allow people to complain to this advisory committee. Let me ask you a question as we talk about this. I saw you had two ranking officers on here as non-voting but part of the process. When these boards meet, when this board meet, where does the recommendation go to? Is it going to the Officer Police Monitor? Does it go to your office? Or if issues arise or concerns, where is the follow-up after this board?
So the recommendations would come to me since I would have the ultimate decision on the policies, but OPOM has a seat at the table, so they will be aware automatically when the recommendations are made, so they, they will know what's going on.
And we're talking about more policy and procedures and normal practices?
I'm sorry, ask that again, please.
Their recommendation would be for policies, procedures, and normal practice of the police department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Those are some of the concerns I have right now.
Thank you, Gina.
I just have a, a comment, I don't have a question for the chief, but I think it is a slap in the face that members of color on this council have been strategically left out of this process. I see people who are well-meaning people, but who know very little about actual city processes. There are no votes to influence a change in this, and so you will not see me publicly lamenting, but I know game when I see it, and it is unfortunate that the wishes of the people, the Race and Culture Task Force who called for an Oversight Committee, that has been ignored. I just want that in the record as my commentary for this issue.
Any other questions or comments for Chief Nokes? Elizabeth?
Chief, I just have a, when we look at that list, I have a couple of questions about the folks that are on that list and then those that are remaining. So I can assume, because you said that there are some that you were still in conversation with, that these are the folks that have committed to joining.
Correct.
Okay. As you spoke with every single person on that list, were they all in agreement that this was the best course of action, that, that this was the type of community advisory board that they felt was most necessary for the community?
That was not a discussion we had when we discussed the Community Advisory Board.
Did, did any of them bring up to you that they didn't feel like this was what the Race and Culture Task Force intended when they made that recommendation?
There were some that made it known when I spoke with them, they were in support of the Oversight Board, and I thought it was important to have their voices on our advisory board as well.
Okay. And then for those that you, you said that you're still in conversation with, is there reluctance by them to join this committee, or?
It's more of a conflict of interest.
Okay.
They want to make sure there is no conflict of interest, either with any dealings they may have with the city or with the organization that they represent before they make a commitment.
What, what would that, can you walk me through like what that, I'm having a hard time understanding what the conflict of interest would be? Do they receive CCPD funding? Are they employed by the city?
That was a concern of theirs. They didn't tell me exactly what it was, but they said they wanted to check on that, make sure that there, anyone else at their organization that might have a concern was able to voice that.
Okay. Accountability, collaboration, and transparency. And then I heard you say that there's a long-held belief in community involvement, but when we go back and we look at the charge of this particular board, there's no mention of community collaboration. It's PD and OPOM. And so I think, to me, that's my red flag, is that when we have laid out in black and white what we're charging this group with, the word "community" other than the, the title is left out. And so are we really involving the community? And I go back to, to what we discussed last time you were in front of us and we were discussing this topic. I appreciate the effort that you've gone through to, to select these folks, and I think that there are some great folks on there. There are some folks that I look on and I say, "Well, if it were me picking someone from that particular community, that's probably not the voice, the most appropriate voice that I think should be in that room." And it goes back to the big difference between this board and the board that was proposed by council, and that board was proposed by council as a result of the Race and Culture Task Force, the main difference was who gets to pick them, whether it's the community through council or PD. And I think the fact that PD gets to pick them regardless of who's on it, right, casts a shadow over what, that doesn't need to be there over this particular board. And so I would ask you to go back and think about those nine. What do we have? How many open seats do we have?
Six.
Is that six? So if we got to nineteen and last time we didn't even want nine, so we went from nine was too many to now we have nineteen, so if you have six, what's three more? And there's nine of us here on council.
Any other questions or comments for Chief?
I, I do want to add something. I just want to ask a question to Lee, and I think this was one of the things that we asked in the process of the Oversight, because I want to make sure it's, that it's clear. As far as the Oversight that we had proposed back in November, and Chief has presented the Community Advisory Board, can both of them be in play?
I mean, you could, you could certainly have two boards, one that advises the chief and one Oversight Board, that there's nothing that would legally exclude that from, from both existing.
Right. And I just wanted to make, I just want to make it that clear, for one, to the community that, number one, first off, we appreciate you going into the effort of putting, well, thank Elizabeth back, councilman went back first, from when you had this discussion, bringing out the process that we already had this on the books. And then we want to thank you, Chief, for going back and reinventing the wheel and creating such a board. You heard my comments and my thoughts, and I may have more comments and thoughts as I fine-tune your presentation, but I do want to say this to the council and to the community, that I think it's important for our community to still have an independent Oversight Committee. I think it's important for you to have your advisory board because it makes your job and give you the ability to be transparent or to say the things that you need to say and have a collaborative effort. But I think when we talk about over nine hundred thousand residents of the city of Fort Worth and the, the characteristics of the nation, it's not something that Fort Worth is doing wrong, it's happening all over the nation. And so I think we need to have a, an independent Oversight Board, and I'm going to, when we present this back to the community, I'm going to take a lot of your recommendations that you have put here as for your board, so that if we as a group agree that this is a great advisory board, then it shouldn't be a problem with allowing some of these same mechanisms being in the Oversight Board, and those are some things I want to put on the table. So thank you, Chief.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the work that went into this. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues who've spoken, that, you know, I think both review boards can coexist. Help me clarify something for myself in my own understanding. This board would be responsible for reviewing policies within the general orders? Are they responsible for ordinances as well or just general orders?
Ordnance as far as city ordinances? No, that, help me understand the question. Ordnances that are in place that pertain to the Fort Worth PD?
Exactly, an example, the curfew ordinance.
I would have no problem with them reviewing that.
Right. And so the reason why I bring up that is because as the council having a review board, it allows us to get community input on decisions that we're responsible for voting on, like a curfew ordinance. And so I want to encourage us that as we continue to work on deepening community engagement and creating more seats for community to have conversation about what does it mean for our communities to be safe, and that we also consider that council also needs that advisory board because there's decisions that we make that ultimately, you know, fall in the same realm of work, which is why, you know, the council proposal was presented to have a council policy review board. And so I think the curfew ordinance, while still fresh, is an example of something that the council could have put through this policy review board to get, to allow us more community input. And so that's just my two cents, I appreciate the work that you're doing on this. I do think we left some work undone, and I'd like to see this council get to some kind of workable solution to create an advisory board for this body.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Val.
Mayor, if, if I can just respond to you on behalf of the Police Oversight Office, and I agree, Councilmember Nettles, probably doing our presentations together, I can understand the perception of that, but I think it was important for us to, one, make sure that everyone knew that police oversight was still a big part of the conversation as the chief is walking through his information. The Police Oversight Office is committed to civilian oversight in whatever that looks like, and we're open to taking steps to get closer to better accountability and better transparency. We do think that this is a step in the right direction that the chief is taking, but there are other steps that are needed as well.
Thank you, Val. Any other questions, council? No? I'll just close by saying again, thanks, Chief Nokes, and to Valerie for stepping in of OPOM and the transition. It's not lost on me that this is probably one of the more difficult conversations we've had as a council, probably the most divisive issue we've faced, especially from the dais. But I think today's conversation reflects the body that I think we aspire to be, that this is not perfect, there is still going to be a lot of pushback for Chief Nokes on the people he started the conversation with, and there's still need for improvement. I'm going to choose to kind of give my commentary separately and send it to you, some people I think are missing and, and that are needed, especially to Chris's point, our youth, twenty to thirty-five, that category is, is definitely a void. We all know that police and community relationships have to evolve, we have to build trust and accountability, not just with our police officers, but with each other. And the best work we can do as leaders of this city is by this type of conversation. We respect each other, we are listening. I am obviously open to the evolution of this conversation, this is just another starting point. I by no means think this is a final solution for where we need to be, because at the end of the day, we want to be an example in this country of what policing in community should look like, and I think we can get there together. So to my colleagues, thank you for listening, please continue to provide feedback, and we'll come back to this topic again and again, as many times as necessary, on behalf of the citizens of Fort Worth. So, thank you, Chief. I think our next topic is the city of Fort Worth future city hall relocation. Tanian, we're here, you want to talk about money.
So I'm going to kick it off while he's coming up. I thought I would try to provide a little context, and you mentioned it earlier, that we do need a new city hall, and I'll remind everybody that there was a group of people that moved into this building about fifty or so years ago and thought this was the coolest place at that point in time. That's part of this conversation, is this is not a five-year decision or a ten-year decision, this is a fifty-year decision as we talk about a new city hall. So the timeframe is, this is big because it really is about forty to fifty years into the future. If you remember, and I, I do, so I'll just throw it back out there, when we purchased the former Pier One building in January of 2021, no, no, no. It's not that good. But I do remember January of 2021, if you, there was so much excitement about purchasing the building, and we just kept having to tell people, "Don't pack your bags yet," right? And the timing we were giving people at that time, for those of you that might remember, is we would move in, we, we were kind of putting it off for a year, that "Don't pack your bags yet, we'll be in, in the spring of 2022." So it's not lost on me that we're about to head into the spring of 2023, right? And so we might have missed that boat a little bit, but one of the things that we did in that period of time is that we made the right recommendation and the council approved that we needed a project manager so we could have a more informed vision as we move into the new building. And we hired the Athenian, what do you call that group?
Group.
Yeah, okay, there we go. And Tanian came on board, and I'm just thankful that we've got the Athenian group and Tanian because I do think he has led us through a process where we're in a much better position to make an informed recommendation, going after a more informed vision of what we're really trying to do in this new building. It is never, ever easy to come to this table and to say, "Oh, and we're going to recommend that we need more money to hit this vision." So that's really never the, where we want to be as a staff, where we say, "Hey, we need to recommend that we need more money." We're at that point, and so one of Tanian's jobs in mind today is to be able to share with you why we believe that is true, to hit the vision that we've talked about as we move into the new city hall, the former Pier One building, that it is going to require more money for a variety of reasons, and Tanian's going to walk us through those. But I want to go back to one of to one of the thing. There, when you think about it, there are a few projects that a city manager gets to bring to you that has got excitement by a lot of people. I mean, this, this sucker has got excitement with all employees. It's got excitement of people in the community. And I think it has the excitement with the folks around the table. And, you know, there's, sometimes I just don't want this to go by without noticing that, boy, this is kind of exciting. And people are excited about doing it, and I don't want to lose the excitement. So with that, Tanyan, you're going to try to explain where we are, where we're heading, and keep that excitement going.
Cool.
Yeah.
And add for more money.
I appreciate it. Thank you, David, and thank you, council and mayor, as always, for the time today and for the, you know, the prep sessions to review kind of where the project is and the overall strategic vision of the project over the last two weeks. This is part of our normal quarterly update. Obviously, we have a bit of a media presentation this time to cover when it comes to scope and overall funding for the program. As David mentioned, you know, I think it is important to call out that when we came on board, and you'll see this kind of later on, at that point in time, there was a thought of, of what this building could be. And I think one of the things we were first tasked with was driving the overall goals of the program, right? And really getting the project, the city leadership, our project team overall, comfortable with what we were trying to accomplish. And, you know, as David mentioned, that's a bit of an evolving component on a multi-year, multi-phase program, especially when you're talking about something that, as you see in the goals here, is truly the vision for the next fifty years for the city of Fort Worth. So just to refresh everyone, I know I've presented these every single time I'm up here. I'm going to continue to do that. I think it's important for us to anchor in our values and our goals as we do in kind of everything we do in our lives. And so, you know, creating an inclusive and engaging public space, what that has meant and what that means continues to grow as we work with the community, work with our elected officials, and work with our city staff, maintaining the Class A look and feel of the facility, both for our staff and for the public, right, to create a safe and efficient element for folks to come and work with local government, creating efficient, equitable, and flexible workspaces. One of the things that we talk about with the property management group all the time is how can we support departmental growth, departmental changes, and all those types of things that happen every day in local government and minimize, you know, capital outlay in the future on those types of programs, creating sustainable and cost-efficient buildings, transformational delivery of city services, and obviously the vision for the next fifty years. So, you know, on some of those topics, we did have our sustainability open house in partnership with Councilmember Beck on January 25th. And, you know, this program and, and this open house really stemmed from a series of efforts that the project team had made to incorporate sustainability into every element possible within the program, as well as work with the community to source information on that. In this open house, we covered elements of sustainability currently planned for the program, which include green stormwater initiatives, natural daylighting, high-efficiency fixtures in our new build components, as well as targeting, you know, a lead gold component with our council chamber facility, different areas of sustainability that we've already started on the program, whether it's economic sustainability in our community, or the reuse and recycling of the existing furniture in the tower. Areas explored for potential use during the program that may not make sense in municipal application because it would either, A, increase maintenance costs for the city, or B, have an extremely long payback period, as David mentioned, you know, a fifty-year, forty-year building for city hall, some of the payback periods on some of the items we looked at were longer than that and would likely result in a new city hall at that point in time. And then finally, you know, we took time for public input for our side overall to see where we could add, you know, along the way and, and get kind of an overview. I think one thing that I found impactful, and I'll let Councilmember Beck comment on this, but, you know, halfway through the presentation and through the open house, we stopped and asked the, the public group that was there, how many folks were surprised at what sustainable efforts had been made. And more than half the group raised their hand in support of that, which I thought was really interesting. I think that's a, you know, that's kudos to our partners at Downtown Fort Worth Inc. and Tarrant Regional Water District that have really pushed us in a number of areas, as well as the city staff and our, our city council for really pushing on that front. So I don't know, Council back, Councilmember Beck, if you have anything else to add on this session, but I think it was a, a great session overall.
No, I just really appreciate y'all's willingness to engage the community like that on a highly specific topic. And my favorite part of it, and the thing that I learned and I thought was really cool, was the, the AC condensation collector. So if you could just share that one little tidbit before you move on.
Sure. And yeah, one of the things that, you know, as we talk about trying to find true sustainable solutions, one of the things we found in the tower that, you know, we want to really augment and grow is there's a, a condensate collector for the huge cooling towers that exist in the tower today. And so the condensate from that is actually collected and recycled in the different parts of the site. And as we continue to grow our green space and overall usages, is something we're going to see how we can augment and grow in that capacity. But that's a really great feature that, you know, was preexisting in some capacity and something we're looking to grow going forward.
What are we going to use that water for?
We're going to be using that water for a lot of the natural, local, native plants. So we'll be planting on the side as well as potential green space as well that we're looking at there, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on that before I move along? Okay, great. So I want to give an update on my personal favorite topic, the federal floodway easement with the Tarrant Regional Water District and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This is a, a full timeline. I know it's a bit of an eye chart, but I wanted to give kind of an overview. We really started our engagement with the Corps and Tarrant Regional Water District about this time last year. And, you know, have been through twelve months of side-by-side work and have gotten to a point where we are at the proverbial two-yard line with this submission and, and have some final elements of archaeological review on the site that we're working through in partnership with Justin Newhart here at the city of Fort Worth, as well as our partners at Tarrant Regional Water District. We'll continue to provide, provide updates to this council and to city leadership as we move along. But, you know, obviously that does have an impact on our council chamber timeline. We're pushing as hard as we can to meet all those goals. And I'll continue to kind of update as we move along there. From a quarterly update, at this point in time, I will continue to update on our business equity spending. I know we kind of recognize some of the work that Christina and Gwen and the group at Diversity and Inclusion do on a day-to-day basis, but I want to give them a special shout out. They have been incredible partners in this process with our project and with the city of Fort Worth's efforts overall on this program to recruit and bring as many, you know, diverse vendors to this program as possible, including vendors that haven't previously participated in city programs. And so at this point in the project, we've already had three vendors that had not previously been registered with the city or with NCTRCA that have gone through that process and actually won bids and are working on this project. So we're going to continue to drive that. This number is not just, you know, a pass-through number. We have actual members of the community that are participating here. So we're going to continue to keep to drive against these goals, but tracking at about thirty-one percent at this point in time. All right. So moving into the bulk of the presentation here that, you know, David teed up for me here, since the beginning of the program, when we came on in May of twenty-one, March of twenty-one, we worked the first couple of months to really set goals and understand the scope of the program. And one of the things that we looked at originally was about a nine-hundred-person move, moving from some buildings across the city of Fort Worth into the tower. And that really included some minimal updates to floors and otherwise. As of this week, our current move count is nearly sixteen hundred, which is awesome for the city to be able to bring together that many functions and buildings and operations, but is obviously, you know, a pretty significant lift as far as overall staff in the building and, and overall work to accommodate that. You know, to help with some of those functions, we've been able to work to get some additional space in the tower through lease exchanges with some vendors that, you know, had to get out of leases for one way or another and worked with our, our city staff and this council to approve those functions and the payback periods associated. So we've added some significant additional square feet. We had planned to have a couple floors as what I call as-is or patch and paint floors, minimal updates and move staff in nearly as-is. As departments have grown, as departments have evolved, that approach really doesn't make sense anymore. And as David mentioned, part of this is future-proofing the building to be able to accommodate growth as well as continuing change in function. So we'll be making some updates to those floors. If you've driven by the building at night, you know that we are trying to comply with the migratory bird program in the city of Fort Worth. And we have a couple floors that the lights will physically not turn off. It's one of those fun things that you find as you open up a building. And so we have to be replacing the lighting control systems on many of the floors in the building. As the staffing number has grown, as we've continued to do demo and investigatory work on the tower, we found that there are some restroom and staircase updates that need to be made, both from, you know, just kind of overall use and functionality, but from an aesthetic perspective as well. And, you know, ultimately, we've also found that the elevator system originally planned to have a control system-only update does have some mechanical items that are coming either end of life or end of support life within the next two years. For those of you that maybe have not been through a high-rise elevator replacement program, it is not super fun. And so it's one of those things that we'd rather do now before people occupy, occupy the building rather than when we move sixteen hundred people in. We've added some additional square footage to the council chambers, both to meet the overall kind of functional requirements that we've been collecting, but also from the federal floodway four oh eight process-related items. There are some pretty significant grading, elevation, and waterproofing changes that I'll walk through here in just a minute on that front. And then ultimately, some lobby updates to support the final council chambers location. And we've been able to bring some key city functions into the lobby space as well that weren't originally planned. So as a brief overview here, I'll be coming back in either March or April to give an update on kind of the council chamber interiors, as well as the floor plans associated. But I'm giving you a bit of a glimpse here. I want to walk through specifically the changes that have come from really two areas to the chamber at this point in time. So the first being the federal floodway-driven changes. If you are not familiar with the concept called valley storage, essentially, we have to keep a total max volume of water and water increase adjacent to the river. And so part of that means having the minimal amount of footprint on the site as possible. And so what we've decided to do is push a three-story facility, so two stories worth of public-facing functions and one admin connecting floor. This has minimized our overall footprint and obviously helped that valley storage component. We have had to made significant grading changes to meet the four oh eight process, as well as associated entry and egress changes to meet those new grades, foundational and structural components. Just to give you an idea of the significance of the change, the finished floor elevation of the existing Pier One building today is elevation four four nine. And we're being asked to waterproof and/or grade up to elevation five five three on the site. So that's a pretty significant lift. And I do want to give a kudos to Corillo Engineering, the group that's doing civil on this project. They have done an absolutely unbelievable job to navigate a really, really difficult program when it comes to this. So kudos to them. And like I said, a big recommendation from me there. We've also added significant function to the council chamber facilities. We've added an executive session room to really support overall flow of the chamber. We've added green room for media briefing and otherwise, catering kitchen space, security spaces. Due to the pending sale of Fort Worth Public Library, we'll be adding Fort Worth TV staff, Fort Worth TV broadcast components to support council chamber broadcasts, and overall elevator and elevator lobbies there as well. Obviously, those are kind of the functional changes. Obviously, at this point in time as well, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we are facing some significant inflation, aggregate construction inflation in this type of industry since May of two thousand twenty-one is sitting about thirty-one percent on aggregate. We are thankfully significantly south of that due to bringing on Lynn Beck, our C Mar partner, is pretty early in the process. They've done a great job of helping us navigate some supply chain inflationary issues, but obviously still some things to work through. Just to give you some magnitude as far as square footage and other added components, really everything that is inside this purple barrier on the lower part, I'm sorry, outside of the purple barrier on this lower floor here, has all been added since the beginning of the program, either for functional reasons or for entry egress resulting from the two-story approach in the four oh eight. And similar here, everything behind the dais on the upper floor has been added as a part of this program. So some pretty significant square footage added there. To the tower, obviously, you know, we've talked about significant growth for departments, both individually, but also some additional divisions and functions that are planned to come now as a part of the program. We'll be making some lobby updates to accommodate those functions, as well as a true pre-council space. For those of you that attend council meetings, boards, and commissions or otherwise that take place either in this room or in the public session room, you know that it can get pretty noisy when folks are outside those doors during council meetings throughout the day. We'll be creating a full lobby pre-council area where folks can spend time before, during, or after council meetings. We'll have broadcasts of the meeting running. We think it'll be a great fit for the operational significance of what the city of Fort Worth does on the Tuesdays, media briefing and green room space, mezzanine updates to connect to the chambers, some of the mechanical updates I mentioned, and then obviously additional build-out to tower floors to accommodate additional staff. So I want to give you some samples of what that looks like. So for those of you that maybe haven't been to the building in a while, or, you know, haven't really looked at a floor plan associated with the building, this is what the tower lobby looks like today. It is a very open lobby, but there's not much programmed in way of supporting public function or overall functional spaces. It also has a quite large mailroom that's not needed for this program. So our proposed changes are going to bring functional staff for city departments into this space, a larger mailroom than is today, but obviously really functionally primed, right near the freight elevators, creates the pre-councils lobby area over here on this side of the plan that creates place for seating, gathering, as well as showing the council meetings. Also, significant public seating throughout the space. One of the things that I know as I walk around the building today is if I'm coming to do a, a meeting with one of the council members or otherwise, I often find myself trying to squat somewhere to, you know, check email or otherwise in between meetings. This floor plan will accommodate for lots of folks from the public as they're coming to work with city staff to have a place to, to be during that time period. We're also bringing in this media briefing area here that will be a true green room media briefing space, and then some significant signage and wayfinding to help people get through the building as we go forward. This is an example of, of one of the planned originally as-is floors. And so you can see a couple of things jump out right away. Number one, there's only really two meeting rooms. Number two, all of the offices and workstations are really jammed together. And number three, there's almost no natural daylight coming in this space. That previous floor plan sat about eighty people total. With the changes that we're planning for these floors based on departmental growth, we're able to add eight collaboration spaces, whether huddle spaces, meeting spaces, plan review spaces, we were able to bring that. We're able to accommodate fifty-five more staff, so one hundred and thirty-five staff on this floor at this point in time, which is great. We've added a work cafe concept throughout the tower to support overall recruitment and retention employee morale for the city, aligned with the building space standards throughout. As I mentioned, one of the things that's important for us is being able to make it so that departments can lift and shift between floors quite easily going forward, also creating equity across roles across departments, and then creating lobby and storage space and aligning with the ten-year growth plan. So just to give you a flavor of what that kind of looks like. To the site, some pretty significant changes here, I'm kind of just going to run through. Overall gradient site work to meet the four oh eight process, as I mentioned, a lot of overall gradient to bring the elevations in line and the contours associated with the drainage plan, sanitary sewer reroute for the parking garage, which is still a work in process with the folks at the water department who have been great partners on that, lighting updates to support and activate a green space, TRWD green stormwater requirements, and facilitation of gathering alternative works areas. So you can see kind of a layout there. From the federal floodway, some pretty significant impacts that I've kind of mentioned in each individual area, really across the council chambers, the parking garage, and the site itself, we're looking at a seven to eight million dollar impact related to some of the things that I've run through here. As you can see, that federal floodway runs almost directly through our site. And if you've seen how the river was retrenched in nineteen sixty-one, I believe, it shows, you know, really running directly through the site. So this has been obviously a big challenge, but once again, I appreciate the partnership that we have with those groups kind of moving forward. At this point in time, we're not looking at any major changes or funding requests for the parking garage. We did have to make some changes, as you can see with this kind of raised space down here, to allow for effective water flow through that space. We were able to reduce parking spaces to offset the costs at this point in time. No additional funding is projected. So where does that bring us overall? I wish I could tell you that, you know, we have a bronze statue of M.G. Carter somewhere in the budget that I could cut out. But really, at this point in time, you know, there's a lot of staff coming to this building, a lot of additional scope, and a lot of really key elements to really support the overall program. I'll give you a couple of different views of this because I think it's important, and, you know, working with David on this, to be transparent across the board. We wanted to share. So this shows you the aggregate breakdown of the requested additional funding, shows you kind of where we sit against the overall budget that I've been presenting to you really for about two years now, including kind of a new line for site updates related to some of the core elements is where, as well as some of the overall site developments in partnership with the chamber. And then I think a breakdown, you know, we talked a lot about the what, like what's changing, what's coming. But I think it's important to understand the why some of these things are changing, right? So you have costs allocated to additional staff, major maintenance items. Like I said, that's a do-it-now versus do-it-later type scenario. And, and many of those, it's always best to do it without the building being fully occupied. We have inflation costs, federal floodway, and overall added scope here as well. One of the things I think is also important is, you know, we talked about this in the sustainability session, but one of the most sustainable things the city of Fort Worth could have done was purchasing an existing building to renovate instead of building net new. If we built a new building, similar scope, similar size, our projections right now in the North Texas market put out about a four hundred million dollar project. And so by doing what we're doing, obviously, these are, these are heavy investment projects, but they're investment for the next fifty years. But there is some serious efficiency here, both from an economic and sustainable view. Additionally, I've mentioned this before, but I do want to bring this back up. As a part of this, we are vacating thirteen, well, actually with Central Library now, fourteen city buildings, nine of which are, are really direct sales of part of this program. We have some additional leases that are being terminated as a part of this program as well. And so both some significant capital coming from the sale of these buildings from an efficiency perspective, but also from maintenance and operations. We have several aging buildings that have some upcoming deferred maintenance that will have some, some big efficiency on the, on the OpEx side of the house with that. have some um, some big efficiency on the on the OpEx side of the house with that. Just from a, an overview perspective, uh, you know, my team, one of the things that we pride ourselves on, we have several um former city leaders that that work for us now at this point in time, and and one of the things they always stress with our team is being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And so throughout the pro, the program, we've been practicing what's called value management. Um, value managing down any finishes, uh, materials or items to be as economically efficient as possible until a final scope and dollar values agreed to, of which will then move to value engineering, right? So we'll be managing against this number presented today throughout the remainder of the program, and um hopefully, the next time we talk about money is when we get to the end of the project, we're doing a ribbon cutting, and we're talking about how we made it through. So uh, that'll be the process we'll kind of drive through going forward. So where do we go from here? Um, so concept floor sessions will take place uh late March, early April. That's uh the opportunity for city staff, uh, the elected official staff and their supporting staff to come and see what um the finishes, floor plans, um, you know, seating and offices will look like, as well as some of the new technologies that'll be coming uh in March and April, and we'll be working with your teams on that. Uh, we'll have our first move-ins to the tower in late Q three, early Q four of this year. Tower moves will be completed at this point in time in late Q one of twenty twenty-four, and then the council chamber is on track to be completed in the first half of twenty-four. Obviously, um, pending the final four oh eight approval from the Corps, but we're moving as fast as we can on that front. So I'll pause. Uh, I know it's been a long damn presentation, so I tried to get through that as fast as possible. Any questions or comments from me?
Questions, comments, council? Go ahead, Carlos.
Tanyan, uh, thanks for your time uh in meeting with me and also uh your presentation. I wanted to follow up on one thing that I neglected to bring up when we talked. Um, you recall that I had suggested that uh you, the Athenian group, look into a single or do feed, dual feed uh to the site, you know, in in lieu of some weather-related event or other event that that could cause the loss of power at a city hall. Both are expensive, especially, you know, the dual-feed approach. Uh, I think you provided me back in April of last year an email that said as much. Your group looked at it, but the costs were prohibitive in that sense. But you also said that you were looking in other ways uh to maybe provide additional power, uh, you know, redundancy and stability in that uh power uh supply, looking at the HVAC systems, uh, switching mechanisms, et cetera. Can you give us an update on where you are with that?
Yeah, no, excellent point, and and just to, you know, kind of refresh the broader group. So uh, we did explore that with Encore. Um, we did find, number one, uh, there was a pretty hefty pr- price tag, but number two, um, the two dual feeds that would have been available for our site, actually both were unavailable during the freeze that happened in two thousand twenty-one. And so uh, we evaluated as a project and felt that, you know, spending the additional ten million dollars for fee that would go down didn't really make sense for the application, could be applied elsewhere. So yeah, excellent point. As far as what we've been doing since then, um, we do have a generator in the building um that supports uh a number of the key functions for a number of days. In our council chamber facility, we're looking at where possible to have battery backup and functions for key operations. Um, we are also running um PDUs and UPS to all of our key uh IT functions in the tower. And one of the things that I think has been possibly the most redundant in our overall view of trying to be safe in that capacity is we are not planning to relocate the overall city data center, if you recall. Uh, so we'll be running a dark fiber connection to all of these IT functions to make sure that city network and functions can stay online uh during uh times of crisis.
Okay, just one follow-up question, and you may have answered it before, uh, forgive me if I don't remember. Uh, what is the condition of the current generator there? I'm assuming that was in a, uh, an original piece of equipment that was there when the city purchased the building?
Yes, correct. So it was there when the building purchased, building was purchased. It has been refreshed several times during the lifecycle of the building, and our initial facilities conditions assessment uh that was done, as well as the more recent ones, both say that uh that generator has significant life, and there's no plans to replace it at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? No. Tanyan, awesome job. We're really appreciative that you're working with us, and to David Cook and your whole team, this is still exciting. So thank you very much for keeping us going.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. One more. David Cook, you're up, right? Or is Reggie going to go first? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, um, John Sanford, City Treasurer. Appreciate the opportunity today to present to you our two thousand twenty-three debt financing plan. So with that, and I'm sorry, let me introduce Alex Lauffer. For those who don't know Alex, Alex is our debt manager. He really handles the day-to-day administration and oversight of the debt portfolio, which is no easy chore. I'm sure he'll tell you that, so. Okay, so on today's agenda, uh, we'll, we'll provide a quick market update, an overview of our uh new fund, money financing transactions that we're proposing, um, some restructuring, cash, uh, or I'm sorry, debt dis- extinguishment opportunities for debt service savings, talk a little bit about our j- uh general obligation debt capacity, and then we'll uh wrap up with a look at next steps and a timetable of action items. So the takeaway here, um, and I'm sure it's no secret to any of you, we are in a rising rate interest, rising interest rate environment. The, unfortunately, the historically low rates we've been enjoying are in our rearview mirror, at least for the foreseeable future. So while rates have increased, you can see we're still well within the historical rate spectrum, so. Um, as we put together the plan for you, um, we have embedded variability into our debt modeling um to accommodate market volatility uh and potential ri- further rise in interest rates. Uh, but it is important to note that municipal debt doesn't always follow the Fed rate movement one-to-one. There are other factors such as supply and demand, things of that nature that play an important role in how we will ultimately price when we go to market. And so as a result, we could see deviation between the final pricing and our expectation. So that's my market update. With that, I'll turn it over to Alex to walk through the, more of the details with the financing plan.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to present the two thousand twenty-three debt plan. Um, I'll start by sharing a summary of proposed new money issuances that we plan to move forward with over the next several months, after which we'll dive a little bit further into the details on each. Um, so to start, the new money summary includes a hundred sixty-eight million dollars in ge- general obligation bonds to be paid from property taxes over twenty years with an estimated true interest cost of four point one five percent. Up to ninety-three million dollars in certificates of obligation paid from both property taxes and culture and tourism revenues over twenty years with an estimated true interest cost of four point two six percent. Eighteen million dollars in tax notes paid from property taxes over seven years with an estimated true interest cost of three point five one percent. Um, a hundred fifty million dollars in water sewer revenue bonds paid from water and sewer revenues over thirty years with an estimated true interest cost of four point six two percent. And lastly, thirty-six million dollars in drainage utility revenue bonds paid from stormwater revenues over thirty years with a true interest cost of four point seven one percent. Uh, and just to note, um, these values are all estimates at this time with final project and parameters to be determined prior to bond ordinance authorizations. So among the debt that is being supported by property taxes includes a hundred sixty-eight million in general obligation or GO bonds, which will be used to support the delivery of both the twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two bond programs. Uh, the listing on the left provides for how we plan to allocate those bond proceeds among the bond propositions. Other property tax-supported debt includes the ninety-three million dollars in COs, of which up to fifty million is currently programmed for upgrades to future city hall, uh, with the remaining forty-three million being used for phase one convention center construction. Uh, and I'll note that the forty-three million dollars will be entirely repaid from culture and tourism revenues. Uh, last, the tax notes are being issued to provide for new and planned fire apparatus replacement, as well as the construction of the Northwest Radio Tower. Um, so a final note on the GO bonds, this issuance will mark the last tranche of the debt issued for the twenty eighteen bond program. Uh, and we'll, we'll also mark the first series of bonds issued for the twenty twenty-two bond authorization, leaving four hundred seventy-five million dollars that is currently scheduled to be issued over the next four years.
Real quickly, David, when you and I met one-on-one this week, and this is an oversimplified analogy, but I thought it, it actually made this applicable to people in their households, is the philosophy of how we utilize our bond program to pay for infrastructure in the city of Fort Worth, and how that compares to how typical homeowners in the city of Fort Worth utilize a mortgage to pay for their homes?
Yes, as we talked about, when we do bond programs and we've got those scheduled every four years, that's to pay for infrastructure that's going to exist for twenty or thirty years or longer. Just like you would finance a house over thirty years, we're going to finance some of this ins- infrastructure over twenty and thirty years so that current users of the infrastructure pay for it, but also future users of the infrastructure contribute to the financing along the way. And so what you see here is, this is, I think, a great picture. This is the last bond sale for the eighteen, which means we, we are in the ending phase of the twenty eighteen bond program, and it's the first bond sale for the twenty-two bond program, so we're in the early phase of the twenty-two bond program. And I'll just go ahead and say, somebody out there is working on the twenty-six bond program that will put the voters in four years from now, or less than four years from now. A growing city needs to make sure that it's planning the infrastructure that way, and it is similar to how you would finance your house. You're going to pay for that over time with a set amount of the income that you set aside for that purpose.
And if you, I like, I think this slide is helpful because if you look at our twenty eighteen authorization, twenty-two, or just the overall bond program, you're under four hundred in twenty eighteen, just shy of six hundred in twenty twenty-two, which arguably is still a conservative um bond program for a growing city. So this council, as we think about the next bond, where each of you may think in your respective districts, there may be additional need for infrastructure, and, you know, right now, we've really focused on streets and mobility for obvious reasons. Sixty-six percent was this last bond program. Um, but I just think this, to me, is interesting, even though it's, it takes a lot of concentration at the end of a long day, because the next bond program is the first opportunity for this council to really participate in that process, but also importantly, understand where our focus has been as a very fiscally responsible city in the last eight years. So thank you. Sorry to divert attention.
No problem. Um, so I will move on to our enterprise uh debt issues that we have coming up. That includes a hundred fifty million dollars in water sewer revenue bonds to support water and sewers capital program. Um, additionally, we've identified a need to increase water and sewers existing commercial paper program to support their continued growth and capital needs. Uh, we are proposing to increase the size of the program's appropriation authority from a hundred fifty million to two hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Similarly, we plan to move forward on thirty-six million dollars of drainage utility revenue bonds to support stormwaters' capital program. This issuance is part of the capital delivery spurred from the rate increase that was done back in twenty nineteen. So now I, I'll, I'll just give a brief update on refunding and defeesance. So in collaboration with our financial advisors, we continuously monitor refunding and cash defeesance opportunities with the goal of achieving debt service savings. Although several existing bond obligations are currently callable uh for refundings, the rise in interest rates have pushed these refunding opportunities out of the money, meaning the estimated debt service savings generated do not meet the, the savings threshold provided for in the financial policy statements. However, uh, we are still seizing the opportunity to be good state stewards of taxpayer and ratepayer dollars by taking advantage of a cash defeesance using available funds in the general debt service fund. Uh, by cash defusing the existing twenty thirteen CCOs, we can retire this debt early and generate nine and a half percent net present value savings, or eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, so just wanted to give a, a brief update on our GO deck. Capacity analysis listed here includes the embedded assumptions of our financial model. This model is dynamic, it's continually updated as conditions change, um, and so a lot of work and effort goes into, to monitoring and updating this model and help, help us with our decision-making. Um, a, a forecast of the model is provided here. The bars represent total aggregate debt service over time, and the gray line projects total debt service fund revenues. So the gap between the bar and the lo, the bars and the line is considered to be the city's debt capacity.
Okay.
So I'll conclude this presentation with a timeline of events that will take place over the next several months. As early as next week, we are bringing forward ordinances for the certificates of obligation, the GO cash defeesance, and water and sewers commercial paper program. Other bond ordinance authorizations are scheduled to be delivered on April eleventh. Um, we plan to hold rating agency meetings that week or the following week, uh, and then bond sales are currently scheduled on May tenth and May seventeenth, with closing and delivery of funds occurring a month later. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for your time.
Questions, council? No? Thank you all very much. I know that's very hard to beat in a concise presentation. We appreciate you.
Thank you for entertaining us.
Absolutely.
Before we um conclude, I would like to give a, a brief shout-out to our FA team, Carlos Allen with PFM Financial Advisors, and Adrian Galván with TGEL. They are a lifesaver in helping us navigate a volatile and challenging world financially that we're in today, so we, that, it's a fantastic team that supports us, so.
Thank you both for being here. Okay, council, I think that's the last of our presentations for today. Um, next up is any future agenda items or requests from council members? Anybody?
I got you.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Uh, so I would, in light of Christina Brooks's discussion about the HRC and the lack of appointments, um, can we just get a status IR on the HRC, what its charge is, who's currently appointed, and, and what those vacancies are? And then I'd also like an Amber Alert, I'm sorry, an IR on the Amber Alert process. I think we get a lot of questions about, you know, people see on social media if there's, right, what qualifies, what doesn't, just so um when we, again, so we can answer those questions for the public.
Sounds good. Carlos?
Okay, finally remembered, okay. Like an IR and I guess uh staff to look into minting the city code that pertains to the distance which uh, um, a restaurant that sells alcohol uh can be proximate to a daycare for children specifically. I'd like to see if we look into that, especially you said daycare includes a educational component and does, you know, cooperational work with some of the ISDs.
Sounds good, Carlos. Anybody else?
Mayor, I, sorry, I forgot one.
You're good.
Um, if we could get an IR on how uh mufflers, loud mufflers, uh, play into our noise ordinance, and whether or not those are regulated, and if so, um, what can we do, and if not, what can we do to, to ease that pain?
Michael?
Yes, I have two. Uh, one, I'd like to understand better from the water department, uh, an IR process, whatever makes sense. Um, when someone moves from one address to another address, we have a very complicated process. I personally just went through this, and I happen to know people in the water department, uh, but it should be as simple of, of moving an address. I turned off my water at one place, turned it back on, but it wasn't actually on, and the bills didn't actually, so you had another account number. I just think it's very overcomplicated for our citizens, uh, and I, we just got to be more efficient. So I'd like to understand better how we could make that better for our citizens. In addition, the code red process, um, how that sign-up works too, um, and how we are informing people too that if they've moved, they've got to re-register through the system as well if they think they're already registered uh somewhere. But if you're moving within Fort Worth, we should make this as easy as possible for our citizens. And the second one, I know we're doing an overall look at our boards and commissions, and I know Jeanette, she and I have talked about that already, about, um, we have two new council members coming on, and what does that process look like, the education process? But it's also, you know, some recent events. I don't think we have a true process. We do a conflicts check before we um put someone on a board, but we don't really do an ongoing education piece. We don't have a conflict of interest uh form that I know of, a co- code of conduct, a code of ethics as part of our boards and commission, and a process for removal if someone violates any of those. So I would like a report on that, and maybe some um updates, suggested updates to our ordinance about how that process would work.
And I, just to add on to Michael, he already mentioned it, because we're adding two council members, it probably is natural you're just going to add two to every board and commission, but if there's any recommendation from, from legal, especially if that needs to be adjusted, let's start talking about that now. I think that would be helpful. Gina?
I have two, and Michael, you should know that our board-appointed process is better because when I came on board, listening to popular voices, I appointed someone who had actually committed voter fraud, and I didn't know it until I saw it on the front page of Star Telegram. And so we now have a trigger question inserted into that process so that, you know, there are, there are some things that, that will happen. Uh, I hear you chuckling, Chris. Yeah. Anyway, the, uh, I've already mentioned- Anyway, the, I've already mentioned one future agenda request, that being geography, so that we know when people sign up to speak on zoning cases, we know how far they live from the address of that project that's being sought for the change. The other is, I'd like to know if we can go back to the technology or create some that lets anybody click a button to see what construction is underway right then in our city, you know, by council districts. I think it'll really show the citizens how aggressive we are moving on infrastructure. And so being able to know where it is, it used to be you could look up under your name, and they would show you all of the projects in play. I don't think that's current right now, but I think it's very important as we tell our story. Yes, city projects.
Anyone else? No, mine, we've already talked about this, and maybe, I don't know if it's an IR, it's probably just a presentation, is litter abatement? We still get lots of questions about the investment we've made, which is working, that's great, not, this is really more of a coordination with TechDOT and the role that they play. And I've even told some of the TechDOT officials, there was a really great campaign, Don't Mess with Texas. They say it's still working. If we need to be advocating for additional resources to be put into that program, because as much as we're working, putting investments, and I'm worried that our freeways and highways are not being cleaned up, and therefore, citizens think we're not really doing it. So whatever y'all think is best in a presentation, be great. Anybody else? Okay, meeting adjourned.